And welcome to the December 6, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting. And I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if the clerk is not here to take roll call, they're probably not aware that we are starting at nine.
I can take the roll if you want.
You want to?
Commissioner Woodward?
We want to just skip and go straight to presentations and then we'll come back.
Okay, so let me do this. Since our clerk is not here, before we get into the official roll call and invocation and pledge of allegiance, let's start, we'll start with our presentation of the Employee Service Awards this morning. I've been advised by legal counsel that the requirement is that we don't hold any hearings until after 9:30. So if we finish a little early with our service awards, we'll get a little bit of a break, and then we'll start up at 9:30, and as soon as the clerk arrives and we get it, after that, we'll do our roll call, invocation, and pledge. So with that, I understand we have some employees that have joined us this morning, and some are watching us via video, and want to recognize them for their service, and I understand we have a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. Today is a very special day, and we are excited about our employees. These are our service awards, and they are recognizing our employees beginning with their 20th year, that we do it in a public setting. Our other employees, we recognize at five, 10, and 15 years, but we recognize that through placing their information on our internet site, so that everybody will know who has been with us for that period of time. But these individuals have been with us even longer, and we actually started, you know, not having everyone in the chamber because our capacity is only 150. And we have 275 employees that have been with us 20 years, up to 45 years, and it's always a year later. So we're extremely proud of these employees. They do excellent work for us. We recognize the fact that longevity has its place because we have institutional knowledge that helps us move the county forward in a very efficient manner. So on that note, Mr. Condry, are you?
We're ready to roll the video.
We're ready to roll the video. Mr. Condry is our Human Resources Director, and he has been with us for a very long time as well. So we're going to roll the video at this time.
I'm Lisa Delarrianda. I've been with Palm Beach County for 40 years. I am Team PBC.
My name is Kenneth Smith. I've been with Palm Beach County for over 41 years, and I am Palm Beach County.
My name is Stiles. I've worked for Palm Beach County for 40 years. I am PBC.
My name is Gary Laird. I have 46 years with Palm Beach County. I am PBC.
Mayor, thank you very much, and Board members, for allowing us to run through the video. We tried to be as efficient as possible. However, we cannot thank these employees enough for being dedicated, committed employees. These are our employees that we consider all essential here in Palm Beach County. So when our residents need our help, they're there, and they don't hesitate. And so we want to, again, thank them all for their many, 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 many years of service. We do want to give a special recognition and gifts to our employees that have provided us 40 years or more. And I'd like to call, are you going to do it from over there?
Do it from there.
I'm going to call Lisa Delarrianda. Oh, Lisa. A lot of the employees, especially 30-plus years, I kind of grew up here in Palm Beach County with. So it definitely warms my heart that we're recognizing them today. Lisa Delarrianda is the Director of Public Affairs. Lisa started out as a baby over in the airport and worked her way through the airport system. We brought her downtown as our Public Affairs Director when we lost our Public Affairs Director to pancreatic cancer. And so Lisa has done an outstanding job. She's led us through COVID storms. She's tried to keep me on the straight and narrow with the press. That has been definitely a job for her, and I cannot thank her enough for her support, dedication, and commitment to the residents of Palm Beach County. Lisa, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, ma'am.
Come on, put it down and go shake some hands.
Absolutely.
We'll get you on the other side.
Wonderful. I'm used to this drill.
Our next employee, Kenneth N. Smith. If you're here, come on up, Kenneth. Kenneth has been with us, again, for 40 years, 40, we're always a year behind, so really 41. And he's been in our purchasing department. He's the person that makes sure you get the orders through the purchasing department to your departments. So he moves those things throughout the county, and we could not do it, and he does it with a smile, no matter what. No matter what the weather is outside, he's smiling when he delivers. So Kenneth, please come on up, and we thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Next, we're going to ask Mr. Donald Stiles to come up. Mr. Stiles has also been with us for 40 years. He's been in the Water Utilities Department. We're very proud of the fact that he's been with us for 40 years. He's seen a number of directors come and go in the Water Utilities Department. So we want to thank you for all your years of service. We know that you're leaving some well-trained people behind whenever you're going to leave us, and we want to thank you again for all the residents of Palm Beach County as our system has grown throughout the years. And so you've serviced even more of our residents here in Palm Beach County. So again, thank you for your service, and please join us on the stage, on the dais. And Mr. Stiles is no relation to the former Utilities Director, Mr. Stiles, for the record. Our oldest award, our more tenured service award recipient is from our Engineering and Public Works Department, and that is Mr. Gary Laird. And we want to definitely invite him up. We want to thank his wife for her support and making sure he shows up every day, prepared to work. And we also have, he brought his own cheering section. They love him over in our Engineering Department. So we thank you for your years of service. Go on up. Do you want to say anything? That concludes our service award for the morning. I do want to, again, thank all of our staff, and I'm hoping that our employees that join us, again, stay and become a very important part of Team PBC, because these employees definitely have been the backbone for Team PBC. Again, thank you.
All right. I believe we have five minutes before we can begin our official meeting, so we will take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 9:30. I wanted to do that. All right. Well, thank you very much, and we will call to order the December 6, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Baxter?
Here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Carner?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Here.
Mayor Wise?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Woodward, would you please lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance? All rise, please, if you're able.
Father, help us to be sensitive to what is happening to those around us. Make us aware of the concerns of others and guide us through the decision process that is before us today. Give us the strength and courage to do what is best for all those who come before us. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, on page 12, 3D1 has been deleted for further staff review. On page 42, 4D has been deleted. And on page 48, 5G1 is an add-on regarding the airport and asking the Board to consider a corrective action plan.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I would accept a motion.
Is that moved?
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, and a second by Vice Mayor Sacks to adopt the amended agenda. All right. Moving on, our consent agenda. Would any Commissioner like to remove any item from the consent agenda?
I would actually like to move item 3E3. I think it's something that we could highlight.
3E3, do you have a page number on that?
Page 14 of our agenda.
Okay. So Commissioner Moreno is going to pull item 3E3 on page 14. With that, would somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? Show that the consent agenda minus item 3E3 on page 14 has been approved unanimously. And now we'll take up item 3E3 on page 14. Is there a presentation, or? Good morning. You're recognized, Mr. Green and Taruna.
Good morning, Mayor.
I should say Dr. Green.
Would you like a presentation or any summary?
Actually, I would like a summary.
Sure.
I would like a summary. You know, we're always presenting problems. This is a solution, and I'd like everybody to hear about it.
Absolutely. So item 3E3 is an item that just allows us to get reallocated portions of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program to Palm Beach County. It's an amount of about $12.2 million. The county led the state in many aspects of getting these dollars out to the community, and as a result, we were awarded an allocation of about $12.2 million from other parts of the state and the country, so that we can continue to provide emergency rental assistance to our residents. And so we're very thankful for receiving the largest allocation of rental assistance here in Palm Beach County. I think Miami Dade was second at around $5 million, and this assistance will allow us to continue to provide rental and utility assistance to our residents for some additional months.
Thank you, much appreciated.
All right. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Moreno?
With that, I make a motion, we accept 3E3.
Okay, so Commissioner Moreno has made a motion to move item 3E3 A and B forward, and Vice Mayor Sacks has seconded that motion. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your summary.
Thank you.
And great work. All right. Moving on, I think we're now to?
Mayor? I would like to recognize the leadership of Mr. Green and Taruna, Ms. Taruna, along with Wendy and their staff. They have done an exceptional job. We had some administrators complaining the feds clawed back some of their funding. I did not say a word that we received additional funding, but it is all for the good of our residents here. In addition, I want to recognize our IT Department, because they also created the portal, working closely together as Team PBC, and we were able to process applications in a very timely manner and ensure that we were not doing duplicative payments. So again, thank you for your leadership, and ISS for their support in all of it.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. So we'll be moving on to special presentations, and I will lead off the call. So I would like to invite the Friends of the Mounts Botanical Garden, your Board of Directors, Rebecca Doane, Ron Rice, Karen, former Commissioner Karen Marcus is here, I think, as well. I saw her. So, good morning. It is my, it is really my pleasure and my honor to present this morning a certificate of recognition to Friends of the Mounts Botanical Garden. In recognition of the Mounts Botanical Garden, a volunteer-based, nonprofit organization established in 1983 in support of the development and expansion of the Mounts Botanical Garden that was originally a three-and-a-half-acre horse pasture. With the work of the Friends of the Mounts Botanical Garden, the garden has grown to more than 16 acres and is Palm Beach County's oldest and largest botanical garden, showcasing more than 6,000 species of tropical and subtropical plants. Over the years, the Friends of Mounts Botanical Garden have remained committed to the mission to inspire and educate through nature. In 2004, the Friends of the Mounts Botanical Garden funded a research grant to the University of Florida to produce a master plan to guide the garden's future development. In 2017, Windows on the Floating World opened, and in 2018, the Garden of Tranquility opened. Today, there are several unique areas, including the Edible Garden, Rosen Fragrance Garden, Tropical Cottage Garden, Herb Garden of Well-Being, Garden of Tranquility, and the permanent installation of the Moai statues. of the Moai statues. The garden has renovated its visitor welcome center, bookstore, nursery, a variety of temporary exhibits, and offers tours, special events, and classes, and live-stream learning. Just so proud to present this certificate of recognition for all you have done, and thank you for your service and volunteering for our community. And I would like to recognize you, Rebecca. I think you have a few comments for us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. As most of you understand, you know, the hallmark of a successful community, one of the hallmarks, is a thriving, robust, community botanical garden. And we're very, very fortunate in our county to have Mounts Botanical Garden, and we greatly appreciate you all supporting our mission to inspire and educate through nature. I want to give you some highlights of the past year. We had a record-breaking over 100,000 visitors to the garden last year. We are also committed to the health and wellness of Palm Beach County. We have a free Palm Beach Resident Day every month. And also, for those of you that are technically proficient, I'm not as much, I'm trying to get there, but for those that are, we are the very first Florida organization to be featured on Bloomberg Connects, which is a free art and culture visitor app that you put on your phone that helps guide you through the garden when you're there. So we're very, very excited about rolling out and being the first in the state to roll out that program. By the way, we've welcomed back one of our most popular artists, Patrick Doherty, who is doing his final in his career art installation of Stickworks at the garden. If those of you that travel around the country and the world, he is a world-renowned artist that uses natural, basically sticks, that's why it's called Stickworks, to create amazing sculptures in the garden. So we have him right now in the midst of preparing that for our community. Also, as a learning garden, we offer a wide variety of agricultural, garden, art, health and wellness classes and workshops every month. We have ambassadors on the wetland program that's free to our middle and high schoolers. And we're looking forward this year to celebrating the Year of the Orchid, which is focusing on fostering community engagement through love, beauty, and strength. We are also launching a new educational program called GREEN, which stands for gardening rooted in engagement, education, and nutrition to address food insecurity and nutrition for the underserved students and their families in our community. We're looking forward to opening, as you mentioned, our new welcome center in January. We have so much going on at our garden, and we want all of you to visit and not let this continue to be the best-kept secret in our county. It should not be a secret. Everybody should be visiting our garden and be inspired by what is there. None of this would be possible without the support of all the visitors, the donors, our huge friends groups here, nice support for today, and of course, you, the county. So thank you.
Thank you. Before we take up a picture, I just want to acknowledge that our property appraiser, Dorothy Jacks, has joined us, and my neighbor, Joel Crippen, who is the head horticulturist at the gardens, I believe. So if not, I gave you a promotion.
What did he say? No, I'm giving two of them to one person.
Who's next?
Followed by District 7.
Whereas an estimated 38.4 million people are living worldwide with HIV, and an estimated 1.5 million new infections occurred in 2021, which is an estimated 4,100 new infections every day. And whereas 15% of persons worldwide with HIV, PWH, don't know their status, and only 75% of them who need life-saving anti-retroviral therapy, ART, are currently assessing those medications. And whereas the global spread of HIV necessitate a worldwide effort to increase communication, education, and action to stop its spread, and whereas the Joint United Nations Program on HIV/AIDS observes December 1 of each year as World's AIDS Day, and leads and inspires the world to achieve its shared vision of zero new HIV infections, zero discrimination, and zero AIDS-related deaths. And whereas the ambitious 95-95-95 global plan to help end the AIDS epidemic has set its target for 2030, when 95% of all PWH will know their status, HIV status. 95% of all people with diagnosed HIV will receive sustained ART, and 95% of all people receiving ART will have viral suppression. And whereas clinical evidence has firmly established that PWH who achieve and maintain an undetectable viral load by taking ART daily as prescribed cannot sexually transmit the virus to others. And whereas the United States 2022 World's AIDS Day theme is ending the HIV epidemic, equitable access, everyone's voice, and whereas in Palm Beach County, more than 8,200 persons are living with HIV. With the declaration of World's AIDS Day, the Palm Beach County HIV Community Prevention Partnership and the Palm Beach County HIV Care Council and its partners are working together to renew HIV/AIDS awareness and to expand and strengthen local efforts to stop the spread of HIV in Palm Beach County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 6th day of December 2022, that December 1, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed World's AIDS Day. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kenny Talbot. I'm the current Chair of the Care Council. I wanted to thank you for having us here again today. But the battle for HIV is far from over. We still have a few people dying. It's not very common, but with you bringing awareness to this, it's going to help, too. There is injectables now. The injectable medications last up to two months, so there's very few medicines that will have to be taken. Let's see. I'd like to say I'd thank all of the members of the Care Council and the recipient staff, and a special thank you to Nita. She's our coordinator. If it wasn't for her, I could not do the work that I do. Thank you.
No, I'm fine. Thank you. (laughter)
Palm Beach County. We could have Joseph Riepel. We could have Diane Jacoby, mom, and Ellen Jacoby, if you could come on right over here, please. All right. Let's get started. Today, we're going to declare December 6, 2022 as Ellen Jacoby Day. Whereas Ellen Jacoby is the founder and president of Ellen Jacoby Casting International. Whereas she has employed over 300,000 Florida actors, dancers, and performers through filmmaking throughout the state of Florida. Whereas she has worked with the who's who of Hollywood directors, such as Steven Spielberg, Ron Howard, Martin Scorsese, and Tim Burton. And she really has made it. Whereas her work includes movies and TV series produced in Florida, such as Burn Notice, Ali, The Waterboy, There's Something About Mary, The Truman Show. Make sure you meet her before she leaves. She's still casting. The Birdcage, La Caja Fue, My Girl, Miami Vice, and Will Smith's Welcome to Miami, among others. Whereas she also lectures, teaches, and coaches acting, and devotes time to various local charities. Whereas Ms. Ellen Jacoby is a nominee for the 2023 Florida Women's Hall of Fame. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 6th day of December 2022, that December 6, 2022, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed Ellen Jacoby Day. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Maria. I don't know what to say. I want to thank everyone for their support. I'd like to thank everybody that I've employed, well over 300,000 Floridians. And this might not be the place, but it could be. Let's get the filming incentives back so I can employ another 300,000. Yeah. And thank you to all my friends. Thank you, Joey and Michelle. It's been great working with you. We'll keep doing more. And Maria, I want to come by the house and see the horse. Thank you all very much.
Boucher in Waterboy 2?
Would Stephanie Shenahal, Susan Carlini, Carrie Gale, Major Tala Marsry, Lieutenant Robert Johnson, Sergeant Victorio Fazino, Sergeant Adam Fox, Tara Applebaum, Safety for Live Foundation, Alexa Lee, Director of Palm Beach County Behavioral Health Coalition, and Jennifer Walsh, please come forward. And if I missed any, please still come forward.
This proclamation declaring December 2022 as Impaired Driving Awareness Month. Whereas Palm Beach County recognizes the importance of honoring those who have been killed or injured in drunk and drug-driving crashes as a result of any alcohol or substance-impaired driving consequences, as well as anyone who has been emotionally devastated by these violent crimes. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reported that every day, approximately 32 people in the United States die in alcohol-impaired vehicle crashes. In 2020, that was one death every 45 minutes. Approximately 800 people per day are injured due to alcohol and substance-impaired driving. And whereas in 2021, 2,935 drivers were arrested in Palm Beach County for driving under the influence of alcohol or narcotics. And there were 1,087 total crashes, 61 serious injuries, and 35 fatalities, all caused by impaired drivers. And whereas December is National Impaired Driving Awareness Month, and November and December are the deadliest months of the year for drunk-driving crashes. And whereas Mothers Against Drunk Driving and Palm Beach County Victim Services... I want some popcorn, too.
It's a show.
And Certified Rape Crisis Center are working to create a future of no more victims and support victims and survivors at no charge. And whereas Mothers Against Drunk Driving and Palm Beach County Victim Services and Certified Rape Crisis Center will host a candlelight vigil on December 7 from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Boynton Beach City Hall Amphitheater to honor victims and survivors. And whereas all citizens are urged to join in local efforts to raise awareness and to honor the lives of those killed or injured as a result of drunk-driving, drug-driving, drugged-driving, or underage-drinking consequences. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 6th day of December 2022, that December 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Impaired Driving Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners for all your support for this proclamation today. Today, through the month of December, we're going to be recognizing our victims and survivors of impaired-driving crashes. In 2021, our Palm Beach County Division of Victim Services and the Impaired Driving Death Enhanced Assistance Task Force, also known as the IDEA Task Force, provided over 1,000 services to victims and survivors of impaired-driving crashes. From the inception of the IDEA Task Force in 2017, we reduced the timeframe in which victims and their families access services from 249 days to three and a half days. And we ensured there was a coordinated centric approach with our various agencies responding to these victims. I'd now like to turn it over to Carrie Gale. She's our DUI Project Coordinator to share some information about tomorrow night's event.
Tomorrow evening, Palm Beach County Victim Services and Mothers Against Drug Driving, as well as the rest of the planning committee, will host our Second Annual DUI Victim Remembrance Memorial, where we will remember victims and survivors of... where we will remember victims and survivors of impaired driving crashes. The vigil will be held at the Boynton Beach City Hall Amphitheater, and it will start at 6 PM. On behalf of the Planning Committee and the IDEA Task Force, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for supporting the project and Commissioner MacBernard for sponsoring the proclamation and recognizing December as Impaired Driving Prevention Awareness Month.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, if we could go forward now with, like I have coming up here, Andrea Doyle, Director of Development, Matt Chimelia, and Robert Frenzo, Directors of the Board and Co-Chairs of the Technology and Innovation Committee, and of course Andrea Virgin, President and Chair of the Board, if you could come on up. See, our fan club just left. Maybe they'll come back. Okay. Declaring December 12, 2022, as the Center for Arts and Innovation Day. This center was founded in December 2018 as a not-for-profit, tax-exempt organization to create, own, manage, and operate a comprehensive, economically vibrant, who wrote this? This is really well done. comprehensively vibrant, future-forward, iconic, and sustainable cultural destination in southern Palm Beach County that would enhance the county's arts and cultural infrastructure. But who started all of this? Who started all of this is a very special young lady. Her name is Andrea Virgin. She was raised right here in Boca Raton, and I know where she went to school. She went to school with my kids. In addition to her education, Andrea trained at Boca Ballet Theater and the Herod Conservatory to become a professional ballerina, ultimately dancing with Houston Ballet and Ballet Florida. Amidst her full dance schedule, Andrea also enrolled full-time in college for her second career as a civil engineer. Upon graduation from Florida Atlantic University and subsequently Cornell University, she swapped pointe shoes for a hard hat and began working for large design companies, using her creative side to design projects that have changed the landscape of South Florida. Because of her, we have the Center for Arts and Innovation that will be here in Palm Beach County. It was initially founded by three members and has grown to include 12 board of director members and 28 advisory council members from arts and cultural organizations and local anchor institutions in healthcare and education. So it was able to create a plan for the project to be located at the north end of Meisner Park on two parcels east of the Boca Raton Museum of Art. This was part of Andrea's dream for which she started her own firm called Virgin Design. Simultaneously, she joined the Board of Directors of Boca Ballet Theater, never forgetting her background in dance. The concept of creating a performing arts center in Boca Raton was born with Andrea Virgin. Since then, the combination of her past experience, relationships with arts and cultural organizations, brought her to take in this point with $15 million in seed money, which have been donated. Everybody has gathered together, some of the world's best consultants, into a 94-year, $1-a-year ground lease at the heart of downtown Boca Raton. So Andrea, because of your efforts and because of the efforts of the people who have believed in you, we will have here in Palm Beach County one of the greatest arts center, I think, in the state of Florida. So, and in addition to all this that she's done besides ballet and engineering, Andrea also has two children, two little girls, and a wonderful man who makes it all possible. She also spends whatever spare time she has left ballroom dancing at Fred Astaire Boca Raton. I'm not going to compete with you. So as we are declaring, therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session this sixth day of December 2022, that December 12, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaim the Center for Arts and Innovation Day. Congratulations, Andrea. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Sacks and Mayor Weiss and the members of the Commission. We're so grateful to be here today and thank you for sponsoring this very special day in recognition of the hard work that's been going on in South County. What started five years ago as simply a way of supplementing and filling in a 60-mile gap that occurs here in South County and the spillover effect that happens to cities and counties to the south of us. The ability to leverage the work that we're doing first was initially just to be able to service the residents, the organizations, the businesses of South County, but that mission has grown. We're so lucky that this county does have an anchor facility here in West Palm Beach, but the South County area was devoid for a long time. The initial mission was just simply to fill that gap, but we have grown significantly since then, just briefly mentioned by Vice Mayor Sacks. Joined here with me are our two chairs of our Tech and Innovation Committee. I want to highlight this just for a moment. The project, in addition to servicing the needs of the last 100 years' worth of programming that we have enjoyed here in this area, the center is also looking to create a center that is focused on the artists and the audience's expectations of the next 100 years. As Boca Raton looks to celebrate its 100th year anniversary here in 2025, the goal is to break ground on a project that will be looking ahead at the next 100 years of what the South County area of Palm Beach County looks like, the economic impacts that will result from it, and the growth of our area, which is really timely considering the renaissance that South Florida is seeing and the attention that Palm Beach County should be continuing to get as a result of that. Thank you so much for honoring us with this day. We very much will enjoy celebrating that with our 300 or so founders and donors that will be getting together on the 12th to celebrate this incredible proclamation. And we just thank you very much for recognizing the hard work that's going on in South County. Thank you so much.
Hi, could Rose Lee Archer and Pat Archer please come forward?
Good morning. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you representing us.
Glad to be here. Okay, so my first proclamation.
That's okay. He's a videographer and he's going to step in because this is what we do. We're a dual team.
Okay. Thank you. So we are declaring December as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas persons with disabilities should be offered the opportunity to create productive, independent lives through community integration into social, academic, and employment environments. And whereas disability mentoring is a valuable recruitment tool for business, government agencies, and organizations to create inclusion in the workplace by helping students and job seekers with disabilities explore possible career paths, build confidence in their own employability, obtain firsthand job experiences in specific career fields, develop lasting mentor relationships, understand the vital connection between school and work, and target career skills. And whereas at all public school sites, the school district of Palm Beach County serves approximately 40,000 students identified as eligible for exceptional student education from birth through the age of 22, who may have disabilities that are physical, cognitive, mental, or hidden that substantially limit one or more major life activities such as learning, working, walking, seeing, and hearing. And whereas, the Archer Disability Foundation works with the National Association of Governors Committees on People with Disabilities and school districts to present disability mentoring events that benefit transitioned students and job seekers with disabilities by introducing skills needed for a variety of employment opportunities. And whereas, by the year 2030, Florida will create 2 million more jobs, leaving 700,000 Floridians with disabilities as an untapped talent source. And the Florida Chamber of Commerce supports closing this workforce gap. And whereas, an estimated 2.6 million people in Florida have a disability, and 13.4% of the state's population deals with some form of physical or mental disability. And whereas, persons with disabilities may confront employment barriers and social disadvantages that prevent them from obtaining employment opportunities. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this sixth day of December 2022, that December 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Disability Employment Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribbed, and executed by the members of this board. The foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Commissioner Robert S. Weinroth, and upon unanimous consent of the board, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and I appreciate being your first ever proclamation. That's great, huh? Well, it couldn't be a better subject matter because people with disabilities are dear to my heart. I was a teen mom, and I had this wonderful child. They told me wasn't going to clothe and feed himself. So they were going to put him in an institution. Palm Beach County has been vital in the maturation and the development of this individual. Just to give you an idea of what happens with teenage mothers years ago, they took Pat as a ward of the court, and they put him in an institution in Miami with the United Way Grant. And that lasted from the age of six to 16. He was non-verbal when he went into the program, and when he came out, he never stopped talking. And so that's a beautiful thing, but sometimes when, as a mother, you go to these landmarks and it was Mother's Day and he went working at Publix and he bought me a little vase. First ever gift I got from him. Second to that was Maria Sacks's smiling. Because I know Maria for many years because I worked on a, I was a member of the Florida Independent Living Council for three terms. I followed her husband. He was the Chair of the Council, and then I became as well. A lot of difficult work, but we made public policy that opens the door for people with disabilities. As you alluded to, 40,000 students just in our school district that are exceptional student education bound. And that means we get more funding for them. They have different programs. They have skill-building programs. And they are mandated to stay into school if they wish, because some parents like to pull them out from the ages of 18 to 22 years old. I always say, keep your child in school as long as possible because you need as much baking in that oven as possible just to get into society. What are we talking about? The terminology inclusion is huge. We talk about inclusion every day lightly. Inclusion for people with disabilities, they're every color, every socioeconomic, every age group. It's amazing how we just look over that particular population. And but not when I'm in the room, unfortunately. I won't allow that. But one thing that parents hope when their child graduates through ESC in Palm Beach County School District is that there's hope. There's hope for inclusion in the community. There's hope that these people find their way, whatever way it is. If that family has a family business, they can put them to business. They can shred papers. They can open mail. They can do all kinds of work that we're not utilizing for. And also, as the Commissioner had alluded to, one of the interesting things is that we have the Florida Chamber of Commerce that is telling us and looking into the future that there's going to be 2 million more jobs by 2030. And there'll be 700,000 unemployed people with disabilities. That's unheard of. What a huge, under-utilized population. It needs to start going into the direction of finding employment parts for these people. And it is my honor to do these disability mentoring projects with public supermarkets, CVS. We did have Home Depot. Things changed during the pandemic, but we're going to get back on track and find more businesses. So if anybody wants to know, Archer Disability Foundation, and give me a call. And you have a child opening for a student 18 to whatever, because we have job seekers after they graduate. So if you have an opportunity for them to become an intern or possibly a part-time employee for you, I can help you out. I can find you someone. All right, and I'm not an employment agency, so I just want to make sure. But you understand that. But right now, I want to introduce one of the most incredible young men, the one that I referred to that wasn't going to clothe and feed himself. So it's really important to see the development that the county and the tax-paying dollars put into an individual's life and turn it around. Pat Archer.
My name is Pat Archer. In the past year, I submitted my resume to over 55 jobs on myfeujobs.edu. And once they find out I had a disability, they said the job is no longer available or I'm not selected. I'm, I love working with Publix, but I wanted to finish my career as an editor, photographer, videographer after graduating with a bachelor's in arts degree at Florida Atlantic University in multimedia studies. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to work with Ryan Moran as a videographer, communications intern at the FEU alumni. And I love working at Publix, and I want to finish my career gold, so I can obtain independence as a professional working in the workplace. And I am proud to be graduate, I am proud to be graduating from FAU, and I'm now driving thanks to my driving teacher at the Palm Beach Safety Council, Mark. Thanks for listening.
All right, thank you very much. And moving on to our regular agenda. Item 5A1. Anyone need a presentation or?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board, I'd like to call Dr. Alonso and Dr. Gunta to the table. We'd like to ask the Board to, we recommend a motion to concur with the appointment of the State Surgeon General, Mrs. Dr. Gunta, as Director of the Palm Beach County Health Department. This, I'm sorry, this transition will occur after Dr. Alonso retires. Dr. Alonso will be retiring effective February 28, and the first full day... Dr. Alonzo will be retiring effective February 28, and the first full day, in effect, for Dr. Gunta will be on March 1. So we have looked at her resume, I did participate in an interview with her after the Health Department filtered all of the candidates, and I believe that she will definitely be a fit for Palm Beach County. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Alonzo at this time.
Mayor Weiss, a pleasure to be speaking with you again, Vice Mayor, and all the commissioners, the new commissioners. Sarah, nice to meet you. It is my pleasure to bring someone that will be replacing me. She's a former graduate of our residency program in preventive medicine, public health. She has chosen that to be her career, and while she wasn't working in that position when she left, because you need to have experience before anybody hires you, but she came, and she was one of the candidates that was in the package, and I was thrilled to see her name there. She will make a great new director. She told me she was afraid to fill my shoes. I said, honey, my comfortable shoes are going with me. You cannot have them, you have your own shoes. But I also want to introduce Mark Landers, he is my boss, besides you, Ms. Baker, of course. And it is our pleasure to introduce her to you, Dr. Gunta. Maybe you want to say a few words, Mark?
I'll just see if I can get up close enough, can you hear me all with this?
You gotta turn it on.
There you go.
Hit the button?
Yeah.
You used an interesting word, replace, we don't replace Dr. Alonzo, I think I've known her many years. She's been a mentor to myself and other health officers over my 30 years in the process. But you build upon the foundation, and Dr. Alonzo has built a great foundation in Palm Beach County. And when we went through the application process, which was the initial screening of applicants, Dr. Alonzo, I believe, had worked with Ms. Baker, determined what Palm Beach was looking for, a physician, public health background. And when that came up, Dr. Gunta's resume was just stunning, it was just the way it presented itself. And then, going through the process where Dr. Gunta interviews first with our office, and then is brought to the county, and then at that point brought back up to the Surgeon General and Chief of Staff, by the time we finished those three interviews, I think one thing was, was present, over 32 years, I can recognize passion, and she brings that passion to this field, and I think we'll just build upon the greatness that you have in Palm Beach County already. So really, Dr. Gunta, I want to open you up if the board has any questions, and turn it over to you.
No, I'll push it for you. Thank you all so much. It is a great privilege and honor to be appointed to this position, and, you know, with such a great mentor like Dr. Alonzo, that I've had the pleasure of training under, I hope to continue to improve, protect, and promote the health of all the people in Florida.
Thank you. Any members of the board? Okay, Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Alonzo, thank you very much for your service. I've been a commissioner for six years here in Palm Beach County, and you've been a great asset to the residents of Palm Beach County for the many years of service, and I welcome you, Dr. Gunta, and we look forward to working with you as we continue to try to improve the lives of our residents in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sax, you're recognized.
Well, you really get to know a person when you're going through the trenches. And Dr. Alonzo, you brought us through COVID. That was one of the worst viruses to hit our country, but especially here in Palm Beach County, we have so many vulnerable and elderly persons. Thank you for your leadership, your motivation, and your optimism, that even though we looked at those graphs all the time, we knew that there was a light at the end of the tunnel. And you led us there. It's like with any doctor who works with you going through a disease, you, you had the optimism, you knew that if we followed the rules, we would come out okay. So thank you so much for that. Our new doctor, God bless you. We're a tough group here in Palm Beach, but I can see that you've been trained under very good people, good leadership, and you would do well. And if there's anything we can do to help you here in the commission, you count on us. Thank you so much for taking this on.
Very much, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I would just like to say to Dr. Alonzo, thank you for your service, all these many years. Thank you for your leadership during some unique and difficult times, at times it was for us, but you got us, as was said, you got us through the other end of the tunnel. To Dr. Gunta, welcome, looking forward to working with you and your leadership protecting the health and welfare of the residents of Palm Beach County. And if you're not aware, I'm connected to public health. My mother was a public health professional for many, many years, was an epidemiologist for Los Angeles County, and so I look forward to your service as well, because it's such an, as we have seen, you know, until things really, you know, hit the fan, we don't realize how important public health is in protecting so many lives in our community. So I just want to welcome you and acknowledge the wonderful work that you all do. So thank you. And I see Commissioner Kerner has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo the sentiments of my colleagues on the board, and to both of you, as doctors and medical practitioners, it's, as a layperson, I recognize that going into medicine is a public service and a huge responsibility and very challenging, but then to go on and choose the public health profession is very indicative of one's desire to help a community and help people directly, and for that, you have my immense respect. So with that, I would like to make a motion to concur with the appointment by the State Surgeon General of Dr. Gunta as the Director of the Palm Beach County Health Department.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner Marino. Any further comments? All in favor, all opposed, that carries unanimously, seven to zero. Welcome, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you so much.
All righty, we're moving on to item 5B1, and I believe we have a brief presentation by our Office of Resilience.
For our new commissioners, I want to introduce Megan Houston, our Director of Office of Resilience, Ryan Mayer from the County Attorney's Office, Jake Leach in the Office of Resilience, but don't get too accustomed to his face, he'll be leaving us in three weeks, unfortunately, so we will miss him, so a little bit of his swan song here, presenting today, but he's been here with Megan since early on, has been a great contributor to the office, will miss his work, his productivity, so wish him the best as he moves on. So with that, I will ask Megan to introduce the item.
Sure, thank you. Yep, Megan Houston, Resilience Director for Palm Beach County, thank you for having us today. We're here to talk about the latest update that the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Compact has created through its Regional Climate Action Plan. This is one of the strongest partnerships in the resiliency space in our, in our county, with our Broward, Miami-Dade, and Monroe County neighbors to the south, where we collaborate on improving the resiliency of the South Florida region. So I will ask Jake to turn it over and just talk about the RCAP 3.0 that we call it, the updates, and the set of guiding principles that share best practices on how we can think about our work in operations with the overall, just keep in mind that this package doesn't commit the county to any individual item, it's a look at what we can do shared collectively in this best practice light. So I'll turn that over to Jake, and I'll also echo what Patrick said, too, we will miss Jake terribly, he's moving out of the county for family reasons, but the Team PBC family is always home for him, too, I think, so I'd like to just thank you publicly for the four and a half years that you've been here. So I will turn that over, and it's his last day, so if you want to stump the scientist, this is the day.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, not last day, sorry.
Thank you, Megan. I want to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to work for the county, and I want to emphasize that this is not Megan's fault. So today, we're here to discuss potential adoption of the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Change Compact, Regional Climate Action Plan 3.0. That's a bit of a mouthful. We call the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Change Compact, the compact, we call the Regional Climate Action Plan, RCAP, and I'll be giving a little bit of background on all of that, because I know we have some new commissioners with us here today. We're also here to discuss potentially pledging support for collaborative regional efforts on climate change. For the last 13 years, Palm Beach County's been a member of the compact, we were a founding member, and it's a partnership between Palm Beach County, Broward County, Miami-Dade County, and Monroe County, so it covers the entire southeast portion of the county, of the state, it's about 6 million people, I think, so about a third or a quarter of the state's population. We work together to produce regional tools to assist our residents and local governments in adapting to and mitigating climate change. So for example, we regularly issue a regional sea level rise projection, and the county adopts that, and we use it when we're putting together construction projects, capital investments, things like that, we use that as a guideline. We also work together to apply for grants. There are specific grants that are only available to regional collaboratives like the compact. For example, as part of the state's Resilient Florida Program, part of that funding is only available to compact-like entities. We recently received $500,000 from the state to assist local jurisdictions with vulnerability assessments, those that can't, don't have the resources to work on that themselves. We also put together a annual regional lead, climate, climate leadership summit, and again, I'll be talking a little bit about that later today. One of the major products of the compact is the Regional Climate Action Plan, or the RCAP. It's a list of potential actions that local governments and other regional stakeholders in South Florida can use to adapt to and mitigate climate change. As Megan mentioned earlier, there's nothing binding about the RCAP, and we don't expect any community to implement every single item that's in the RCAP. We know that what's feasible and what's valuable for one community, even in South Florida, is not necessarily valuable or feasible for another, so we like this to be a very flexible document. The most recent version of RCAP, RCAP 3.0, was completed by the compact last month. This is after a year of reviewing and reassessing items from RCAP 2. We held dozens of meetings with hundreds of local stakeholders from all sectors. Today, one of our recommendations is that the board adopt RCAP 3.0 and implement it wherever appropriate and practicable. Again, adopting the RCAP doesn't bind us to anything, it merely provides suggested actions, and I'd also like to point out that the board already adopted RCAP 1.0 in 2014. In case you're wondering about RCAP 2.0, that was issued by the compact in December of 2017. During that time, the Office of Resilience had been formed at the county, but it hadn't been staffed, so RCAP 2.0 kind of fell through that very specific gap. There are 11 categories of recommendations that are included in RCAP, and as you can see, it's quite thorough. Each category has an overarching goal, it has recommendations for achieving that goal, and then it has actual implementable items for each of those recommendations, and each implementable item also includes a list of potential partners and stakeholders. So here's an example. This is the natural systems category. Natural systems is one of the 11 RCAP categories. The goal is to protect natural systems and the services that they provide. One recommendation for how to do that is NS4, which in this case is to preserve and restore natural systems. And then, one of the implementation items for NS4 is NS 4.1, which is to protect and manage existing natural systems. So obviously, the great work that Environmental Resources Management does already covers this one, but just to reiterate, the RCAP items are meant as a resource for each individual community to pull from. So for example, there are other items in the RCAP that wouldn't make sense for the county to pursue, or they might not be cost-effective. In those cases, we simply wouldn't implement those items. We would go through, we look for ones that work for the county, and those are the ones that we try to implement. You may notice that there's a draft watermark on this text. I also want to emphasize here that the text that you've been supplied with as part of this agenda item is complete. The RCAP itself, graphic design was not complete at the time of this meeting, it will be complete by the end of this week, so when we adopt the RCAP that you've been provided with, it's the final text, but it's going to look slightly different as far as colors and shapes go. Beginning tomorrow, the compact will be holding its 14th Annual Climate Leadership Summit. The summit itself is on Thursday and Friday, but there are a couple of kickoff events tomorrow afternoon. Hosting the summit rotates between the four counties of the compact every year. Last year was Palm Beach County's turn to host, we hosted virtually, a lot of you participated in that, we had about 700 people register. This year's is going to be hosted by Broward County, it's in Fort Lauderdale, they also have about 700 people registered, this is going to be an in-person event. Mayor Weiss, Administrator Baker, Director Houston will all be participating in panels at that event with their counterparts from Broward, Miami-Dade, and Monroe Counties. As part of the event, the compact is hoping that participants in some of these panels, including Mayor Weiss and including Ms. Baker, will be able to sign a pledge that supports the goals of RCAP 3.0 and supports regional collaboration on climate action. This is going to be a public signing that is going to follow each of those panels, so you'll go through your panel, and then the moderator's going to ask you to stand up and sign, it's a large placard that's going to be on the, on the dais. Mayor Weiss, in your case, it's also going to be part of a specific press event, and I'll make sure you're there on time and stuff. So here's the draft pledge. As you can see, this is going to affirm the county's ongoing commitment to climate action, it's not going to overcommit us on anything, it's not going to compromise us on any of the county's other priorities, and we expect that the other county's elected officials, Ms. Baker, your counterparts at the other three counties, will also be signing these So to close, staff is recommending that the board adopt RCAP 3.0 to replace RCAP 1.0, that we implement RCAP 3.0 wherever appropriate and practicable, and that you authorize county-elected officials and staff to sign the RCAP pledge at the summit this week. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there any questions for staff on this item?
You don't, you don't have to stump me if you don't want, I'd be okay with not.
He's not very good with football questions either, so.
Which, which type of football?
Any type of football.
All right. I don't, I don't see any lights lit, so with that, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Sure.
Oh, there's one card, I'm sorry.
Our one and only speaking card.
I think I was going to get up early and come all the way down here and not put in a card. While I do want to commend the work of the resiliency department, and I would absolutely support that you approved this, I mean, sadly, if Greta Thunberg was here right now, she would just say, you know, this is great, but what are you really going to do? And I thought it was, you know, really kind of ironic that, and I appreciate your great work, and sorry to see you leave, but I, the whole speech that was made was, don't worry, you don't have to do anything, just sign this. And that's, you know, the problem, because, you know, the house is on fire, and fortunately, young people are not as, you know, sitting around ignoring this. Now, we saw last week that we approved all this development in the ag reserve, you noticed that one of the things there was agriculture. So that, what I've asked repeatedly is for the resiliency department to weigh in on these decisions, so that it's part of your decision process, it's part of your background, because how are you promoting agriculture when you're opening up the ag reserve to development? So as you sign this, I hope that you- So as you sign this, I hope that you actually intend to follow through on some of it, actually do some of this. Now, I would say that you had a lot of really good ideas on how to reduce single-use plastics. The Resiliency Department spoke that day. You didn't adopt any of those recommendations. Yes, it's inconvenient. Saving the climate will be inconvenient, and people will have to make sacrifices. You may not be able to do every development, and you might have to preserve agriculture land. So I just hope that when you sign this and you agree to it, which I think you should, that it's more than just a photo opportunity, that it's seriously realizing that we're in a problem right now. And we're, we've been fortunate. We haven't been hit by a major hurricane, but we accept that the likelihood is that climate change is making these storms worse. And at some point, we will be hit by this. And when it happens, one of the big issues is going to be that we don't have enough drainage. And why don't we have enough drainage? Because we keep developing on all our open space. I would like to see the Resiliency Department weigh in on every time you make a development decision on what are the impacts. And, you know, so as much as I really approve moving forward and I, you know, I just hope that at some point, this county will actually take this seriously and will see real goals. How many electric vehicles are you going to have as county vehicles? How many charging stations? All that, not just saying you want to do it, but actually doing it. Solar rooftop on county buildings. I could go on, but I won't because I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. All right, seeing we have no other cards, there are no lights lit, I believe, but...
I will make a motion to, for 1A, B, and C, adopt the South Florida Regional Climate Change Compact, authorize the county administrator to implement RCAP 3 where appropriate, authorize any member of the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners or staff to sign a pledge signifying BCC support for regional collaboration action on climate change and RCAP 3.0 at the upcoming 14th Annual Southeast Florida Regional Climate Leadership Summit.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino and a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously, 7 to 0. Thank you very much for your excellent work on this and everything you do to make us a more resilient county. And wishing you all the best. Jake, thank you for your last four and a half years of service to Palm Beach County and our citizens. And we will definitely miss you, and hopefully, we'll get you a book on football. All right, with that, moving on. So we will now, on item 5, I think we're on 5C1, and this is an item... That was requested by Commissioner Sacks a few weeks ago.
Mayor Commissioners, good morning again. This does follow direction. A couple of weeks ago, the board directed staff to accept text amendments for property in the ag reserve known as Brookside for potential changes to residential designation. And we asked for, and we appreciate the opportunity. It's got some history on it and wanted to share that bit of history with the board and get your direction. We think there's a step that needs to be taken if the board does want to contemplate moving forward with those text and comp plan amendment, comp plan items. And wanted to just take this opportunity to get your direction, answer any questions you have, and for you to direct us and tell us where we want to go. So ISMI and myself have a short presentation, and we are available for questions and your direction. So thank you.
Sounds good. Good morning, and thank you, Patrick. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Allow me to provide you a broad overview of the real estate transaction associated with the Brookside property. In 1999, Palm Beach County voters approved the Agricultural Reserve Bond Referendum, which provided for the establishment of a land acquisition program to protect environmentally sensitive lands, green waste, land-for-water resources, agricultural lands, and open space. In May 2003, the board approved the acquisition to the conservation fund from Brookside Tree Farm Limited Partnership of approximately 78 acres under the ag reserve land acquisition program at a cost of approximately $5.1 million. Of that total acreage, 3 acres were acquired for the Lions Road right of way, with the remaining acreage going to the ag reserve program. At the time of acquisition, the property was being used as an in-ground nursery, and it was county staff intent to continue to lease it for nursery operations. However, as the ag reserve bond program progressed, a decision was made against leasing the property. The reasons supporting that decision were financially in nature. Let's review. Consistent with the 1999 bond referendum and to fund the ag reserve acquisition program, the county issued two tax-exempt general obligation bonds. The tax-exempt status imposed limitations on the amount of revenue that could be derived from private parties, and the rent payments were then considered private activity revenue. Hence, the decision not to lease the property was made as proceeding otherwise will have resulted in exceeding private activity bond limitations by year 2012. Later on, staff identified that refunding the bonds with taxable bonds, that is, bonds not subject to private activity revenue limitations, was a feasible alternative and proceeded to draft a strategy towards implementation of a refunding plan. After several iterations with the participation of the county land acquisition selection committee, bond council, and other stakeholders, a refunding plan was agreed to by all parties, which entail entering into agreements that will cause the county to receive more revenue than allowed under the private activity revenue limitations, after which, the county will then have 90 days to issue taxable refunding bonds. In May 2006, county staff presented to the board several agenda items, all of which needed to be approved concurrently in order for the refunding program to be successfully implemented. One of said agenda items was an agreement to sell the 75-acre Brookside property. As per statutory requirement, the agreement to sell the Brookside property resulted from a competitive process. The property was advertised for purchase twice. A first request for proposals was issued in November 2005 to sell the property to a qualified buyer for nursery or row crop production and received only one proposal for about $1 million, which was deemed insufficient to accomplish the bond refund program. A second RFP was issued in April 2006, which incorporated into its proposal and the scoring framework three preferential uses that were recommended by the county land acquisition selection committee. In order to generate interest in the property and receive proposals at prices which will exceed the revenue limitations, the second RFP also established a minimum bid at the appraised value of $3 million and allowed any use permitted in the AGR sunny district with the previously three preferred uses taken into consideration. Three proposals were received, and on May 16, 2006, county staff requested board direction and the selection of the most responsive one. The board selected the proposal submitted by Bowman Group, and that's how the sale proceeded. Approval of the agreement to sell was based on two key considerations. First, that all development rights were to be removed. And second, that the property will be subject to a conservation easement limiting its use to agricultural uses. The appraisals on which the minimum bid were based took into consideration said restrictions. As a result, in 2003, the county acquired the property from Brookside Tree Farm Limited Partnership for approximately $5.2 million and sold it three years later to Brookside State's LLC and Smith-Sunday State's LLC entities controlled by the original owner of the Brookside property for approximately $3.2 million. That is approximately a $2 million discount. At the time the transaction was approved, the removal of said development rights and the imposition of a conservation easement were deemed as guarantees to ensure attainment of the goals of the ag reserve land acquisition program. With that said, I will now turn it over to Patrick.
So ISMI has given you a good summary on the history piece of it. Let me walk you through what we understand to be the anticipation for where property owners looking to go. So, the entitlement synopsis that is being sought would add the land area to the existing Delray Marketplace. That is there, so approximately 113 acres. This, this would also include some existing preserves as well that are anticipated to be relocated off a site. This would yield then a new 95-acre development. They would in turn seek the essential housing designation, and that's our new one in the ag reserve that allows for, excuse me, up to eight units per acre on the gross area of the site. Would be formed in a 60-40 consistent with the other PEDs you see in the ag reserve. It would be done in that development form. It would also include some unutilized units on the Delray Marketplace. And there's 96 of them that were part of the original approval about 15 years ago, and have just not been utilized. At the end, this would yield a new 856-unit project. 25% of that 856 would be workforce housing. So the direction we're seeking, again, we wanted to have this discussion and understand the board's direction prior to hearing comp plan amendment, items going to planning commission, et cetera, and get your direction. There, as ISMI explained, there's a restrictive covenant on it that sets forth the allowable uses. Residential is not an allowable use on there. Some of the variables and the things to consider, partial, total release of the conservation easement would be required. We would tell you that you need to give us direction to contemplate that to allow those comp plan amendment applications to come in. Development rights would need to be assigned, and I think, again, they've indicated they would be seeking that essential housing designation. And then a request potentially for additional compensation. ISMI ran through, we bought it for $5 million, sold it for $3. You know, taking that restriction off, there's inherent value at that point. And there's value, of course, in increasing the density on the property as well. So that could be included as part of direction. But we would definitely see the turning point for discussion from the board and that initial direction. Does the board want to contemplate taking this action at all? And then just going back really quickly, you know, ISMI touched on the history, but going back to the RFP, it was pretty clear development rights will be removed, property will be subject to conservation easement, limiting use of property to ag uses. So there's nothing new about it. These restrictions have been in place since the property's inception in its current ownership form. And then just a little bit by way of timing, if the board did want to direct a text amendment, we're looking at a timeframe. Planning commission would probably see this well into '23. We're looking probably late summer, early fall. Board would see this for transmittal subsequently in the fall of '23, and then adopting somewhere early in '24. So with that, we are here to answer any questions. Take your direction, and appreciate your indulgence in allowing us to come back on this point and share this with you.
All right, thank you. I see Commissioner Kerner has comments or questions?
Thank you, questions, Mayor. And thank you to Vice Mayor Sacks for bringing this issue forward. I think it's helpful for us to have this conversation and learn and understand the history of this property. When I was elected, I began to hear about this property, but from various sources and never in a concise or historically accurate perspective. So when the land was purchased by the county for $5 million and it was sold back at $3, did that difference in price represent basically the lack of development opportunity?
Yes, it respected that, yes.
That was a consideration for the conservation easement?
Correct.
And the conservation easement was meant to be in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to know a little bit more about, like, the history of, was, like, the purchase of the property? And like, why did it violate the bond? And just, just to get a better answer, or I'd like, I'd like to hear from the other side, maybe. Marty, if you, since you're here, can you give me a little bit about the history from your side of, like, what happened?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marty Perry, for the record, and I represent the property owners, not just the 75 acres, but also the adjacent 20 acres. And I'm also here representing the Kite Realty Company, which owns the Delray Marketplace. And there is a great deal of history. Some of what, some of what has been portrayed here is factual. There's a lot more between the lines. The reality is, is this was not a very good piece of property. It was recognized by the county initially when they first looked at it, that it was a problem piece of property. It was not environmentally sensitive at all. It was a poorly maintained, a variety of uses. Basically, it was a dump. And in fact, in the studies that the county had paid for and done relative to the piece of property before they acquired it, they found out that there was a estimated $3.5 million cleanup required for this piece of property. But they looked over that, and they, this was the 10th purchase of the ag reserve bond issue. And frankly, my personal opinion is, they knew or they should have known at that time that it was a potential threat to the, to the revenue aspect of the bonds, that it was going to threaten them. There's, there's a great deal of history behind this thing. But most objectively, I'd like to register a major objection to this because frankly, what's happened here is there's nothing before you. The board, the administrative staff is basically hijacked an effort by us to seek permission by the board to file an application. Initially, we were looking to file a text amendment. We no longer need that with the adoption by the board of the essential housing ordinance. This, this whole hearing is premature. The reality is, is it should be occurring once the petitions are filed and get fully vetted. So all that history that you'd like to hear about can be brought before you and can be laid out. The fact, the other fact of the matter is that conditions have changed dramatically since 2003, when this was first acquired. If, all you have to do is drive by that area and see that it's a tremendously overly developed area. There's a tremendous need for workforce housing in that area. We just put through a great effort and successfully got a bond issue passed. There's, there's over 2,000 employees right at that intersection, just at the shopping center, the shopping center across the street, the 100 employees at the hospital center that you approved last year. I mean, it's just, it's, it's bloating out of shape on there. Something needs to be done, and that's why this should be looked at. But this is the wrong way to do it. We are frankly being deprived of our constitutional rights to due process and a fair hearing. What's happened here is staff has presented to you in a very poor fashion what we intend to present to you if we file our applications. And that's what's wrong with this hearing. This is, this is really the grossest thing in the 56 years I've been practicing here. I've never seen something as outrageous as this.
Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Perry. I've worked with you over the years.
Long time.
Long time. And workforce affordable housing has been an issue. We have worked and supported you and some of your...
Yes, ma'am.
Your applicants. And so I beg, respectfully beg to differ with you that this is out of line. The issue came up under a Commissioner's comments. And before we started down this path utilizing limited staff that I have with their time, as well as yours, that we thought it would be more appropriate to give the board all of the background information, and then they could make that decision to inform us to start to move forward so that we would not be working adverse to each other. If the board gave us that direction, then we would be working with you to make this the best project possible. And that way, we would know exactly where the board wanted to go. When it came up under the Commissioner's comments, we all know that, yes, we did purchase, the voters voted for $150 million bond issue for environmentally sensitive land as well as to preserve the ag reserve. And part of that, the major thrust in the ag reserve was to retire units so that it would not, it could reduce the number of units being built in the ag reserve. This was a major component of that. So I believe that I, my job was to make sure my board had additional information that I thought, as the administrator, they should have before we started going down this track.
That's all well and good, Ms. Baker. That's all very well and good. The reality, however, is, is that you have deprived me of an opportunity to make a presentation before this board. I'm limited here to three minutes this morning. I asked for additional time. I couldn't even get that. I was told strictly three minutes. That's it. I can't make a presentation. What good is my PowerPoints? The board's sitting here with just your story.
I didn't make that decision, Mr. Perry.
And I respect you. We've been, we've worked together and over a long period of time.
Yes, we have.
But the reality is, this is unfair.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir.
I guess my question is, in regards to, I don't know if we can give any directions and, like, I don't know what's the proper venue to have a discussion. I'm just trying to figure out exactly, because I'm not prepared to give any directions, because, you know, in terms, I don't, I don't. I don't know what to, like, how do we give directions?
From staff's perspective, we're working our way through two layers of things. What's potentially out there are comprehensive plan amendments that would further entitle the property, give it that eight units to the acre. There is a restrictive covenant in favor of the board, in favor of the county, that sits on the property. The two are a little bit of a catch-22 area. Back to what Ms. Baker said, we wanted to have this discussion with you openly, did not want the first time the discussion to occur at a transmittal hearing, where I think you would look at us and say, why would this be the first time that we're hearing this? Wanted to have it proactively to the greatest degree possible. Direction, Commissioner, could be one, the board wants to stand behind the restrictive covenant, wants to maintain it, doesn't want to contemplate letting it go. Other direction could be allow something to move forward, proceed, and contemplate making changes, releasing that restrictive covenant. It stands in the way, and we've done this historically, where applications have sought, have been sought on this property, and previous planning director turned away an application that was seeking commercial on the property because the conservation easement had not been addressed at that time. This is about eight years ago or so. So, what we're looking for is your direction. Do you want to consider releasing the restrictive covenant? Or do you want to stand and not contemplate doing it? Not contemplating releasing it would mean there is no comp plan amendment coming forward.
Let me ask you a question in regards to, I guess what I'm trying to find out is, can the applicant just file something without us making a decision regarding releasing our restrictive covenant? I just want to know, can that be done without even us making that decision? Is there a process to be able to do that?
I will look to the attorneys to confirm this. Administratively, in the past, and again, we have a previous example where it was deemed ineligible to seek something else because in that restrictive covenant says the only allowable uses are these farming type uses. Asking for something outside that window would require an action by the board. From staff's perspective, having the discussion, getting the direction, making sure there's at least an understanding of what is out there, and yes, there's an initial interest potentially in doing so, is going to take place. I will defer to Darren a little bit, if you don't mind, on the part of can they functionally submit something. I would tell you, again, we have turned away an application previously that had not addressed that point.
Right. So, they could submit an application. However, whether it goes anywhere, staff has the prior decision that they decided that based on the conservation easement that expressly prohibits residential uses, that the application was subsequently rejected.
Moving on to Commissioner Baxter.
I would just appreciate the opportunity to hear all the facts and hear every presentation. I'm not sure what presentation he wanted to give, but I like to hear all sides of something before we agree on it or disagree on it.
Commissioner Sacks.
This all occurred way before we were sitting here. 2003, 1999, 2000, 2006. Every time I listen to somebody, I get a different story. It's a little bit like selling a horse, you know? You see the horse, it looks pretty good, but you don't know, you know, what kind of teeth it has, or what kind of shoes, or what kind of, or even, you know, buying a car, you gotta, we get kick the tires a little bit. So, and I certainly never want to restrict anybody's ability to speak. That, to me, is absolutely sovereign. I don't know who even owns this property. I've heard various stories about other folks bidding on it and who really owns it. So, Mr. Rutter, I guess you, representing staff, where do we go from here? I mean, do we have a, not only Commissioner Baxter has not heard anything about it, but most of us here have not. And I've been here about two years. Other folks have been here longer than I have. But information, never fear the debate. We should never fear the debate. Let's bring it up. Let's bring the facts up. We are transparent and open, and I would like to hear all the facts. And I think that we need to open this window. Let me tell you, this is a valuable piece of land. If it's going to remain agricultural, let's put some plants on it. If it's supposed to be equestrian, let's put some horses on it. But it's just sitting there, and it's sitting next to one of the nicest Delray Marketplaces that we have. It also is down the road from a hospital. If we're, if we own it, or if we have a conservation easement, oh, let's do something with it. But let's not just argue about it all the time. So, Mr. Rutter, how do we open this up for a open and transparent discussion on a valuable piece of beautiful land that either should stay in conservation and we in the county should do something with it, or let's find some better, highest and best use of this parcel of land?
Let me go ahead. Let me, I think from a process perspective, this is not the venue nor the meeting that this should, this should have been, this should not have come up this way in the first place. It should not, what it should have, the way this should have come down, if there was an interest in trying to have the board evaluate this, it should have been requested that a workshop be held that would allow everybody to come and talk about this property, about potential ideas or whatever they had. But the request was made and staff was given direction to provide the history to the board so that they can be given additional direction. If the board's not able or willing to do that at this time, then I would suggest that this be deferred to a workshop item for some time in the future. I'm looking to the attorney now. She's making a face at me, so.
Well, I'm thinking just let him file his text amendment. What's the problem with using that process?
Because I think there's a lot, there is a lot more. You asked about, or it was brought up here to get more information about this property.
In a workshop, that's fine.
That's how we do that, is by having a workshop where we can all talk to each other in an open meeting.
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
But let's remember that we have normal processes in place, and I'm not sure if we want, you know, this is a special property, so maybe a workshop is appropriate.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to weigh in, but what I believe is that, I believe that the county attorney should work with county administration in terms of creating a process for, where I don't think that we want to decide whether we're going to remove our restrictions whatsoever, but.
Right.
There should be a process that's created by the county attorney and the administration in terms of if someone wants to submit something that is out of the ordinary.
Perfect.
That there's a process for that where everybody gets the opportunity to be heard. That's what I think that we should do before deciding on a workshop. And then, so in that way, once the county attorney creates that process, and maybe it could be to allow the applicant to file a.
Text amendment.
A text amendment. But I believe that the county attorney should, working with administration, should decide that.
Thank you.
And just to make sure I'm clear on what you're saying. So, to have some kind of an extraordinary method to bring something forward, I guess my question back to you is, would that open up everything that anybody wanted to bring, any property that may have whatever restrictions on it that are, in this case, endeared or endeared to the county itself to bring that forward? And that, would you, or inured to the county, would that be the limitation so that it was, it would have to have something specific where the county had put its own restriction on it? Because if it was something that a previous, another, or previous property owner had put in place, I don't, I don't see how that would be able to be brought forth to us to remove that restriction. So, I would assume it would have to be something that was specifically inured directly to the Board of County Commissioners.
I believe, Ms. Mayor, that we should do, that should be a discussion that could be had with, as.
We need to create a process.
As the county attorney's working on the process with administration.
Okay.
So, in that way, there's a specific process that's worked on and that the board would vote on.
Okay.
To create that process. And so, in that way, we're not making a decision on removing any restrictions today or tomorrow.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing then is what we're, what we're gonna, actually, what we're gonna request is that they bring back the process to us to approve, to prove what that process would be, and then, from there, then if, so if such a process were approved, they could then submit against that or with that. Is that, is that, am I?
That is.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Moving on, let's see. I'm not sure I got these lights right. Let's go to Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. I'm piggybacking on what you're asking. I'd like to know, are there other properties with similar conservation easements in the Ag Reserve that may, like you were asking, would fall under this? And, you know, when I asked last week about properties that could do the light industrial commerce, there's certain ones that fall under that. The Ag Reserve itself, I'm sure every meeting is going to have something with the Ag Reserve. And I know that 20 years ago, there was a master plan, a comprehensive plan that was put together. I don't think it was adopted, but it was, it was put out there, and a lot's happened in that time before any of us were sitting here. And just for my own benefit, I would like to know, how many properties are we talking about that this could come before? Are there others with this easement? Are there others that, you know, I have asked how much of this area is actually growing food right now? I've asked a lot of questions about the Ag Reserve, and there's not a lot of clarity for me yet, and I would like to know more. So, as part of that workshop, could we, could we add just a lot more information moving forward on what is on the Ag Reserve, what is operating right now, what's going to be coming before us? Because I believe that this is, it's chipping away, and we need to, we're going to have to maybe decide as a board. It's ugly, and I know there's a lot of people with a lot of opinions, and my email, even though I'm a few weeks in, has been filled with this. I would just, I would like to know for my own benefit, what is going to continue to come month after month in this? And maybe we need to have some hard discussions on what we do with this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
So, at this workshop we're discussing, I do agree. I would love to hear more about the, you know, Ag Reserve, how much property is left available, what can be developed on. Are we reaching the maximums is kind of what I was told. You can only build on so much of it. And there again, trying to fill in these blanks leaves me with just more questions. So, I absolutely would love to hear about, more about the history of the Ag Reserve. And then additionally, I have a question. So, if we are going to start addressing some sort of policy on how to address these conservation easements going forward, is that going to be a part of this same discussion that we are having? And please forgive me, I believe it's Mr. Perry.
So, what I, I think that the best way right now is for the county attorney to create that process, working with administration, and then for us to do a workshop. The county attorney can work with administration to create a workshop, so in that way, all of that would be litigated in front of us. So, in that way, we can make a decision for the future.
Okay.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm so blessed to represent this beautiful area that I've lived in for many years. And yes, it has a lot of competing interests. Some of the interests is essential housing. Some of it is agriculture. Some of it is just to look out and see beautiful land, landfallow, which is, which is a nice sight also. We need information, and we need it from staff. I know that the, we will, or we need it from people who have lived here for many who were part of this. I know that there's a sitting commissioner who was here before, who was part, Karen Marcus, was part of the, this whole institutional basis for policy behind the agricultural reserve. So, maybe at this time, and I'm addressing this to our good lawyer here and to my right, Ms. Baker, and my left, I don't even think that you had the position as administrator during this, but you're too young. I was too. But I feel a little, I got a little light here, you know? It's like there's a death of a, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do this right. We got the right players in this room to make sure that whatever is or is not developed in the Ag Reserve will be done with the consensus of the people who live there and who enjoy it as taxpayers of Palm Beach County. So, I like, Commissioner Bernard, I like the idea of a workshop. I want it so that hopefully, I request that we do it with, and I don't know if we need a structure set up by the attorney and staff. If that is the legal way to do it, as long as whatever structure we have, we can hear from everybody. I want to hear from everybody. I want to hear from the farmers. I want to hear from those who allegedly owned this piece of property. And in that way, we can make an informed decision. We can't make an informed decision. We don't know anything about, you know, can you grow anything on this land? Can you put horses on it? It's equestrian, it's agricultural. So, let's, let's get all the facts. And I would imagine that Mr. Perry, as long as he has, and his clients, and anybody who has an interest in this, have an opportunity to be heard, then we've taken care of due process. And let's open it up. Let's open the windows and let's, let's take care of this, this particular piece of property. Maybe we can look at it in a holistic way and determine what we're going to do with all the remaining acreage of land that we have left. So, that's what I would, I would request, Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly would never stand in the way of any of my colleagues on the board who want to have a workshop on any item or more information, as Vice Mayor Sacks stated. But while we have this opportunity to discuss this issue initially, I want to understand from a technical or procedural standpoint, land in the Ag Reserve that had, that was entitled to be developed without any conservation easement on it. Part of the deal was conservation easement would be applied to a certain percent of that land once entitlement occurred. Is that fair?
Yes.
From there, there's probably thousands of different conservation easements in the Ag, maybe not thousands, but there's certainly, how many would you estimate?
You're well into the thousands. I'd have to look at it again. I'm thinking seven, 8,000 acres that are part of the PUDs that have been developed to date.
Right. So, once those, and I'll have to ask this question later, are the conservation easements as a result of 60-40 and this conservation easement that we're discussing today, are they the same in principle?
Principle, yes. From a regulatory perspective, they evolve differently.
Okay. So, when a landowner has land with a conservation easement on it as a result of the 60-40 rule or as a result of a negotiated agreement like we have here, they can't submit an application because the settled law right now is that there's a conservation easement? Is that what I understand you saying?
So, in this case, no, I'm not saying that they, they can't set, submit an application because this, this property is not part of the 60-40 conservation easement. Under the 60-40 conservation easement, they'd have to get a development order amendment to move the.
The text amendment, actually. The text amendment, actually. If they were looking to modify the uses on the 60, if they were expanding them and changing them from what's in the comprehensive plan in the ULDC today, they would need to change the text.
Okay.
But again, this one evolved differently in the direct sale, accepting the restrictions that are on it while they are probably very akin to those placed on the preserve side of a 60-40. They did evolve differently.
I'm fearful that if we allow a broad scale opportunity for landowners that have 60-40 conservation easements on it to participate in an ability to apply, this board's going to be faced with thousands of applications to remove conservation easements. And that's not what I signed up for. Having said that, in this instance, maybe today's not the appropriate time, but I need to learn more about what the, what the differences are structurally in the conservation easements, and, and would his application be rejected summarily if it was submitted prior to this, this hearing today?
Commissioner, and I, and I think that's, that's where we come, come back to this idea that there needs to be a separate process, and, and I'm, and that's where I'm thinking, where if it, if those rights are from the county itself, that, that would be the own, that would be the way in. Because otherwise, it would be every other property there that potentially is gonna end up here to be adjudicated. However, the one, the other point I would make is that there is a path for people who have property with conservation easements out in the ag reserve, and you and I, except for our new, two new commissioners, have had opportunities where they've come in and they've moved the conservation easement from one parcel to another because it was more beneficial to build in one place or the other. So it, it comes in in a package where we see the conservation easement, and then the receiving site that's going to then take that, and then we lift it up. It all happens in one case. That's, I think that's the biggest differentiator in what we're talking about right now, is nothing like that has been so far has been mentioned. But I think, I agree with you 100% that if we, if there is not a specific process that you will, you will, you will have every property owner there bringing this property and, and asking that that be adjudicated by this board, and so I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and if I could just follow up on that, Mayor, with a question first of all, do the conservation easements that result as a 60-40 iner directly to the Board of County Commissioners, is our, is our name on that? Do we hold the right to that easement?
It does, yes.
Okay, so there's a-
That's not gonna work for us.
Right, so that, there's a similarity in this conservation easement and, and the 60-40 ones in that we hold the rights to it essentially?
Correct. Under this conservation easement, we are the grantee, Palm Beach County.
Okay. From there, there's thousands of 60-40 conservation easements in the ag reserve. Are there other similar conservation easements that are similar to the one that Mr. Perry and his client have? Or is it the only one?
Similar to that one, and again, I'm going, I'm looking at it from the perspective of the evolution of the property. There may be some that are similar. What I would point out, though, is we have tens of thousands of acres of land owned through either federal purchases, state purchases, or county purchases that we maintain our natural areas, for instance, that have evolved in different ways. We would have those same restrictions, we would have changed the land use, and we would have bought it and placed similar restrictions on it. So an exact copy, maybe not, but very similar in a variety of ways.
Okay. And my last question would be, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. There was a precedent set, as I understand, that an application was submitted that would require conservation easement to be lifted, and the staff had rejected that, that application based upon the settled law that a conservation easement is in existence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is in 2014, an application was submitted.
Darren, can't hear him.
What was it?
An application was submitted in 2014. Planning director at the time did not accept the application, kicked it out.
What, what was the property? Do we know?
Thirty acres, some portion of the same property.
Oh, same property that we're talking about today?
Some portion of it, yes.
Okay, I got you. All right, well, I maybe, may created more questions than I got answered in my head, but maybe that's the reason we need to have a larger conversation. Thank you.
All right, all right. Commissioner Sacks and Commissioner Moreno.
But I, and the reason I want to jump ahead is, is you started something that was interesting because this property, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this property has a conservation easement on it that is different than the, many of the other properties. And what I want to do is I want to make sure that, because what we're doing is we are limiting the opportunities for anybody who owns property because other people may come afterwards. Can't do that. I think, and, and the reason, and the attorney said, and I don't want, I am gonna put you on the spot because that's for your lawyer, is that, is that this application had been rejected before because of the conservation easement. Is that correct?
This one.
This one, yeah, this property, Brookside.
That's, that's my understanding.
Not this application.
Okay, now, so-
Not the same.
No, of course not, of course.
Not the same project, and I believe it was only a portion of the property.
So Commissioner Bernard's proposal is a good one because we'll set up a process for this application to review that will decide the issues of its history, because I believe it has a unique history, doesn't it, Ms. Baker? I believe it has a unique history, that, and maybe each one has a unique history, and that's good. But let's decide this one in a process set up between the lawyers and, and the administration. And, and so, and that way, we can examine, because this is, each one has a unique location, and they have to be decided on their, and it may be thousands, but this one is unique. And the second one will be unique. But let's set up that process so we can look at this one, set up by those who know, which is administration, and those who legally will put us down a sane path. And so I agree with Commissioner McBernard's suggestion on that.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. I've been sitting here quietly. Just for clarification, this was originally owned and, and bought and sold. Brookside originally owned it, sold it to the county. Brookside in another, in another name, but same principal, along with Smith-Sundy, bought it. So actually, the principal in the first sale, in the sale at $5 million, and one of the principals in the purchase at $3 million are the same principal. Is that correct? I think of Mr. Steve Wolf. Do I have that proper, do I have that correct?
The property was purchased through the Conservation Fund from Brookside Three Farms Limited Partnership. Controlling agent under that entity ties back to Stephen Wolf, okay, one of the directors, who was also part of the group that came back as the Bowman Group in the proposal to acquire the property three years after.
So Brookside and Smith-Sundy?
They came in as Bowman Group and then did an assignment of the sale and purchase contract, okay, to Brookside and Smith-Sundy.
Okay. So, Mr. Perry, I appreciate your righteous indignation about the process, but what we're doing here today is trying to figure out the dangers of what's involved in this, if this occurs. And I have 12 cards in front of me and several letters in front of me, and we've all received several letters about this. So before we continue with the discussion about a workshop and everything, I think it might be time to let our speakers come up and speak.
I have no objection to that.
I'd like to offer one last comment for you all.
Does anybody, excuse me, does anybody have any objection to hearing from the speakers on this? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, Mr. Perry, you have a card in, so I'll give you another three minutes when I call your name.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to read one, a letter into the record. This was from Jupiter Farms resident, HOA. There are two issues that are involved with this item and its, and its potential text amendment to the county's comprehensive plan to allow for development on the Brookside property. The very precedent-setting item regarding a conservation easement. Jupiter Farms Residents Association and the Jupiter Farms Environmental Council is against any manipulation of any conservation easement anywhere in the county. This is a terrible precedent for all the other lands bought both for environmental and the ag reserve. The staff report back, backup does a good job explaining why that was done. To undo it now on a whim is irresponsible. The purpose of the conservation element of the Palm Beach County Comprehensive Plan is to promote the responsible use, protection, and restoration of the county's natural resources. Unraveling that shows a lack of stewardship. The idea of swapping land has some merit, depending on the situation, so long as Palm Beach County comes out ahead. There are situations when a land swap makes sense, so long as any conservation easement will move along with any such mechanisms. Conservation easements need to protect the future of Palm Beach County, and removing it violates the public trust. Land swaps that involve lands in a protected area should only happen if there is a true net gain for the environment and public interest. In short, any change in the county's comprehensive plan to allow for development of any real estate holding is doing a disservice to the people of the county who have pledged their will and money for one thing, only to have the BCC negate it. You must seek to do better for the residents of Palm Beach County. So that was submitted by Matt Gitkin. As for comment cards, Dr. Lori Vineker, please take one of the mics. Eugene McAvoy? I hope I got that right? Please take the other mic.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, I'm sure he'll be back in a minute, and Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, and Administration. I'm Lori Vineker, 10626 La Reina Road, Delray Beach, Florida, in the Agriculture Reserve. I am a farmer in the Agriculture Reserve. I grow tropical fruits, I have horses, and I am also president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations. We've had a lot of history today, and today I'm actually formally submitting some books here on our first 25 years of our civic activist organization, and Craig here has told me that he'll put one in every one of your mailboxes, so you can see what this organization is all about. It is not surprising that this large parcel is being addressed at this time, since there is so much development activity along the Atlantic Avenue and 441 corridors. It's great to hear the history. The Alliance has been communicating with the landowners from way before even the Agriculture Reserve Roundtable. We have been speaking with them, and the discussions, the conservation easement was always the obstacle that we pointed out. And it would appear that before any land or use or zoning changes be made, that the easement be addressed. A wording, working on the land use or zoning application first would be like putting the cart before the horse. Further, there are other obstacles here at this time. It's infrastructure, and not just the expansion of Atlantic Avenue issue, it's also the infrastructure for pedestrians along Lions Road. There are areas where there's no sidewalks, and I've been hearing from residents up in the Valencias that they have to go out onto Lions Road. There's no sidewalk on the west side. It stops in front of certain developments, and then it, it continues. Again, they have to go out into the road. So that's, the, the infrastructure is an issue. And also, of course, we know that Lions and Atlantic, that intersection is, it is dangerous, there's many documented accidents there. So, it would be, I think, we would think that there really needs to be completed before more residential development that was, if, and this was not expected to be considered, this particular residential development, so it would be important that that infrastructure be taken care of first. As for the conservation easement, perhaps you can determine prior to the submittal of any further applications whether the county would allow possibly substituting an equal amount of acreage elsewhere in the Agriculture Reserve for this conservation land, especially if that substituted parcel were to be located, say, west of 441, next to more, more environmentally sensitive lands. But the decision really lies with you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Gene McAvoy. I have 50 years' experience in vegetable production and marketing, spent 25 years with the University of Florida as a vegetable specialist in southwest Florida, and often worked with farmers in this area. And it's my expert opinion that continuing vegetable production on this property is no longer sustainable nor economically viable. This is a highly competitive industry. We compete not only with, you know, farmers in this area, but in other parts of the country. Climate change is increasing the ability to produce vegetables during our window, so we are competing now with places like Martin County, St. Lucie County, and up into even South Georgia. One of the major challenges on this property is the encroachment of development. There's a high-end community right next door to the property, to the west, and these residents are constantly complaining about noise created by irrigation, pumps, perceived odors, and, you know, causing grief for the farmer in general. There's a school both to the, to the north of the center and a shopping center, Delray Marketplace, which was described, and both have complained about flies which come off the unmarketable produce. At the end of the crop, there's, you know, always produce that's not harvestable, that's not marketable for whatever reason. This generates flies, and again, several properties have had to address this. One, Delray Marketplace, Ocean One, has had to install screens. In an effort to be a good neighbor, the grower right now is restricting his production window to the cooler months to try to mitigate that fly issue, and that limits his ability. Most of our lands in this area, we like to get two to three crops off an acre of land on a yearly basis to be economic, and by limiting yourself, you're not able to generate that kind of income. In addition, the soils in that particular parcel are quite light. They are not well-suited to pepper, which is our most economically productive crop. It's better for cucumbers and squash, which generate lower income. And again, that's reducing the farmer's ability to generate the funds necessary. Because of the restrictions, attempts to rent this property to other farmers are not attracting the type of income that you would normally expect in this area, $500 to $700 an acre. Growers are offering half of that because of the restrictions on this property. So again, it's very much limiting. So again, for all of these reasons, it's, it's my opinion right now that this property is no longer agriculturally or economically viable, and the county should consider other options for the property. And I thank you.
Commissioner has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, are you professor? Doctor?
I'm an extension agent, emeritus now.
Well, sir, did you, did you examine the soil on this particular property that we're talking about, or are you talking about generally?
We can generate soil maps.
This particular parcel? And is there, is there, are there vegetables growing on this particular parcel today?
Right now, cucumbers.
Cucumbers. And I know that there was a violation or a code violation or something on one of the restaurants at Delray Marketplace, a complaint of flies.
Yes, ma'am.
Was that directly due to the, to the presence and, of agriculture there in this parcel?
Yes.
Do we know?
Grow any crop, there's a portion of it which is unmarketable, you know, because it's undersized, it's over mature, it's affected by insects or disease, and that portion of the crop is left in the field. And as it decays and rots, it creates a fly nuisance.
Okay. And so that parcel is in active agricultural production today?
Active agricultural production.
Okay. And is the use of pesticides on there as well, I would imagine?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your review. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Is the property limited to what you can grow on it currently?
Well, again, the soils are lighter, and peppers, which produce the highest income per acre, prefer a heavier soil. So pepper growers are avoiding the property. It's, there are limits, yes, ma'am.
And the current owner grows cucumbers?
Cucumbers and squash is what they're limiting to right now.
Now, keeping, let's say we kept this in the ag reserve 100%, didn't really remove any covenant. So the, what are our options going forward from there for this space that is actually, from what I understand from Commissioner Sacks here, causing a problem with the Delray Marketplace? Is it, is there any path forward? Like, who would have to buy it? Only someone who could grow cucumbers? Only someone who could grow cucumbers?
Well, again, it might, because of the limited economic income generated by cucumber, I don't know if you could afford to spend the amount of money that would be asked for that property and ever pay it back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
You made a comment about with global warming, the, something that made the ag reserve so special was that it was below the freeze line. So what you're basically saying is that isn't something we should even be thinking about anymore?
It's changing. It's definitely changing. You know, 25 years ago, you wouldn't dare put a crop in Indian River County. They hadn't had a freeze, and we had one last year for the first time in 11 years.
So the specialness of the ag reserve and the fact that it's not supposed to freeze is not so special anymore?
It's...
That's my observation from your comment.
It's becoming less, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, our next card is...
Wait, I have a question.
Follow-up.
Yeah, no, my question is, so my understanding, though, is egg, bona fide egg is protected in Florida, so they would not be precluded from growing or spraying or whatever, even if it impacted a restaurant?
That's true, but you have to put...
Okay, well, I just, so that is true. So there was nothing for the farmer with that property, then, that they needed to do to, because of the restaurant? The issue was with the restaurant, not with the farmer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next comment card will be from Marty Perry, followed by Richard Bowman.
I'm just going to reiterate again about the unfairness of this. I mean, this gentleman that just spoke to you was part of our team to make a presentation. What's happening here is because of the way you're doing this, it's becoming disjointed. And the other comment I want to make goes back to the discussion you were having previously. I mean, I've been appearing before this board for a long time. This board has never had a problem from a policy standpoint of having workshops whenever they thought they needed one. If your present opinion is that you need a policy regarding workshops, God bless you. But the reality is, is that you're in charge. You don't need a policy. You just decide you want a workshop. But more important than that is that you're now wrestling with issues that the only person that's going to be able to resolve them is a judge, because you're talking about basic contract law, basic real estate law, basic zoning and constitutional law. You know, I didn't hear everything that your attorney had to say to you in terms of his advice, but going to the 60-40 issue, if somebody that had a project that was approved with a development plan for 60-40 in the ag reserve area, and they wanted to modify that, they have an absolute right to file an application to modify that plan. You don't have to agree with them. You don't have to approve their request. You can turn it down, but they have a right to a hearing. And that's what we're talking about here today. We have a right to a hearing. This was presented to you as we're needing a text amendment. We don't need a text amendment. We thought we did in the beginning, but that was before the essential housing ordinance. We don't need one now. We can file this application. If we filed it, the net effect would be you'd have five public hearings relative to this whole issue, so that you could have this whole discussion that you're talking about wanting to have, so that we could present our petition fairly and evenly, not disjointed like we're talking about here. And that's the unfairness of this. You know, I leave you with that, because the reality is, is that you're forcing us into a position where, depending on how all this resolves, we file the applications anyway. You turn them down, we appeal that. We're going to be in court. We'll get a judge to resolve the issue. It's, to me, it's a waste of revenue. If we're sitting here, let's use the tax dollars effectively. You have the absolute right, as party to an easement, okay, to modify that easement anytime you think that easement needs to be modified. We're suggesting to you, there's a need for a discussion regarding that. If you don't want to hear that discussion, we still have a right to it. Thank you.
After Mr. Bowman is Karen Marcus, and then Lou, I apologize in advance. Tasmanik?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Board. Pretty hard to follow that up, but I would like to make some corrections of some things that, of the history of this, that were said were not correct. I did not own this property when it was Brookside. I had no ownership in it at all, no interest in it at all. There was a group that was run by Mr. Wolf that sold it to the county. After the county put an RFP out the first time and rejected the first bid, I went to a PRIM and said, hey, if you put the property out for bid, I'll give you a bid, and it'll be above your minimum. And then I got some investors involved. And Mr. Wolf was an investor in the property. And when we go down the far, this property, since we bought it from the county, majority of it has been sold to a third party and bought back by a different group. So there's a lot there that people are saying that they don't have all the facts there. And that, and back in 2014, that 30 acres when we applied, I'd like this board to know what I applied for there. I applied for a farmer's market, a U-PIC, an educational center, and a nursery on that property in the ag reserve, and a permanent market there, and they wouldn't accept my application for that type of use. I just feel like that this property, we need to have the right to file an application and go through the normal process. And if we have a horrible plan and we turn us down, you don't have to release the covenants, and you can turn us down. But I think we're in the United States, and I would hope that we could file an application, go through the process, and get turned down or not. But we might have something, we might have another piece of environmentally land in the ag reserve or outside the ag reserve that we're going to bring to the table and offer in exchange. But we can't even present that until we get it in front of everybody and go through the process. And thank you. Does anybody have a question?
I have a question. For who?
You have a question, Mr. Bowman?
Hi, Mr. Bowman. If you could come back. Thank you, Mayor. If I understand this, this property was owned by Mr. Wolf?
It was owned by a group of people that was led by Mr. Wolf. He was the controlling partner at the time. Right now, he's a minority owner of the property.
This is part of the information I'd really like to know, because I don't. I always thought that this is owned simply by farming companies or farming families. And so this is part of the history that I would like to know. From, and it's me, you're shaking your head, and I appreciate that, because I'm learning things now that, in my review, in my study, did not come up. You had filed an application before to have a marketplace, open marketplace?
In 2014.
And educational institution there? Is that, is that correct, Mr. Bowman?
That's correct. I had, Kerry Kilday was working on it at the time. The county was going through a deal to put a farmer's market out in the Glades. Kerry and myself, we went to the Baltimore Farmer's Market. We went to the Philly Market. We went to New York and Connecticut, went to Steel Leonard's, other markets, spent thousands of dollars, brought back a plan to develop 30 acres on Lions Road as a complete farmer's market educational center with U-PICs, nurseries, glass greenhouses, and tried to submit that plan, and it was not accepted in 2014.
That was in 2014, before the Board of County Commissioners?
Patrick brought it up earlier when we did our...
The application was rejected by the Planning Director at the time. It was a 30-acre amendment seeking commercial low future land use.
And based on that, it, nothing else happened until recently, when you want to put housing and...
Well, the market's changed out there, and it's a tough piece of property. The soils, I mean, I brought Mr. McAvoy, because this audience might not know, but he's one of the most respected persons in the country on pepper production. He's been doing it his whole life with the university. We've been growing one crop of squash or cucumbers on that property for 10 years now. We tried to grow bell peppers on there. They just don't work on that property. Over the years, shell rock and roofing tiles and dump, it was, like Marty said at the beginning, it was a dump. This probably should have never been bought by the county. I think that's a lot of the angst here. It should have never been bought. It was bought, and if you read the notes back in time, there was notes that I've read recently, that staff knew that there was a potential of it breaking the bond when it was bought, before it was bought. And also, when I read the notes for the solution, instead of doing an RFP, there was discussion about making a deal with GL Homes at the time that would have brought more units into the ag reserve. There was also a discussion about putting an institutional use there with Father Leo. So there's a lot of history we need to peel back on this onion and look at it. But when you look at the staff initiative, multifamily for the ag reserve, and you peel back this onion, this is the best property for, that can be planned for the area, for the citizens. And yes, there could be considerations. There could be substitutional properties provided for this piece, but it would be a great live, work, play. I mean, right now, there's 1,000 people that work at Delray Marketplace. The average commute is 15 miles. So they don't live in the ag reserve. They need a place to live. And, you know, if I had the plan and we were doing the presentation like Mr. Perry wanted to, we could show Phase 3, where we would like to discuss building 40% workforce, 40% H2B for the need there, and 20% of under-market housing. But we haven't had the ability to even do that. You know, I'm taking this time to say what the plans are. Like I said, I mean, I'm a farmer, and I want to farm, but this is not a good farm piece. And, you know, there was comments about the flies. I've had, from previous Commissioner, Mrs. Berger, her office was calling me all the time when the citizens across the street were complaining about my pumps running, complaining about my spraying. I've had calls from Delray Marketplace. So I've done what I could to be a good neighbor out there. But as development occurs, certain pieces just become unfunctional. The tractors on the road, you need a little larger pieces of land and some mass.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
My question's for staff. So for clarification, what are our options today for voting on? We voting on, is it, was it a conservation easement? Was it? Nothing? So I'm just looking for clarification on what our choices or decisions are today.
The subject of today, Commissioner, would be giving us direction. So either stand behind the conservation easement that we have in place. The board has no desire to make any changes to it, and that would end the conversation on making any potential future changes at this point for enhancing development opportunities on there. The board certainly could direct us to continue a conversation, potentially come back with a workshop, potentially allow application, any number of points along the way, how the board would want to proceed, and hear more, whatever the case may be. But there's certainly an avenue to say, stand behind the restriction that we have in place as is, and not proceed with anything else or any of those other options.
Ms. Marcus?
Hello. Good morning, almost still. My name is Karen Marcus. I am the, here as a resident, a former county commissioner who sat on that dais when the ag reserve was sold to the public, when the public, over the years, came to us and said, you have to find a way to protect this. And we said, if we bring it to you and you support it, then we will protect it. And it passed, $150 million. We were able to purchase as many pieces. We were competing with GL Homes the entire time. They'd go out and offer an outrageous amount of money per acre. We, by law, are only allowed to offer based on appraised values. That's what we did. We got as many pieces as we possibly could, and this is one of the pieces that we got. I don't recall it being objectionable, or flies, or any other uses that weren't compatible. It was a piece of farmland of a size, because all we had, a lot of were 10 and 20 acres. This was a more substantial piece, and so it was important for us to add to the, to the portfolio, if you will. And it was the conservation group that actually was the person that went out there and negotiated these prices for us. I hope you will ask me questions at the end, because, so I can have as much time as Mr. Bowman did to add in. And Mr., Dicky Bowman's a friend, and so is Marty. And Marty used the word to you that this is an outrageous process that he's having to go through. It's an outrageous request. It is a conservation easement. And I think what the Jupiter Farms residents said in that letter says it all. This is not the only piece in the county that we have. We have the entire ag reserve with all those thousands of acres. You've got GL Homes still out there, wanting to change their conservation for another good thing for the county. Everything's about a good thing for the county, but it's really more beneficial to the person making the change. Sorry, but that's what it is. So I really think that this is a mistake. I think all conservation easements should be held up. I mean, there was a reason that we put it on there. And they knew when they bought it, that we were forced to sell, we had to. We were not given a lot of choices. It caused a lot of controversy, a lot of angst. We asked a lot of questions. And at the time, we were assured, we're going to put these two protections on here, so this land remains in ag reserve and can be developed as agriculture. Ron Rice is in the audience. He's your ag extension guy. Let's take him out there. Tell us what we can grow. We've never utilized that department in the ag reserve as something that we really wanted to do. They can tell, you can grow hemp out there. Nobody ever believes me, but it's a very, very viable farming option. Maybe not the soil top, but if the cars drive by it, you don't have to worry about eating it. So I just really ask you to be very, very cautious. Deal with the conservation easement. I mean, look at the impacts of releasing a conservation easement on this to all of the other properties. Don't even just look at the ones in the ag reserve. Look at all the environmentally sensitive lands you have. I mean, it's really, is opening a Pandora's Box, and I would really ask you to be very, very cautious about doing it, and address that if you have to, and do it on a bigger scope. What do we want to do with all these conservation easements we have in Palm Beach County? Not just this one. Let's talk about the environmentally sensitive lands one. Let's talk about all of it, and not do it in a piecemeal, because I get it with essential housing, but enough already. You just passed a $200 million bond issue. Put it in the right places, where you have transit, where you have areas where it need to be redeveloped. Don't put it out west where, yes, I'm sure there are a lot of people that are working out there, might need a place to live, but I think this is, that's the elephant under the nose under the elephant, under all of these things. They all come in and say, I'm going to give you essential housing. So I would ask that you consider conservation easements first for the entire county before you even address this singular issue. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Conner, you're recognized.
So, thank you, Commissioner Marcus. It's good to see you. Oftentimes, this board, I think Mayor Weiss mentioned this, an application comes in, there's a conservation easement on the property, it's moved to another property within the ag reserve. That's not controversial, correct? That was contemplated in the concept?
There have been options, but not in a singular area, if you will. And again, when you were talking about policy, maybe this is a policy to set, that we will do some kind of a swap if we, there's an extra benefit to the county, but that's usually what we would try to apply to it. I'll let you swap this out, conservation easement, has to be in the same location, has to be in the ag reserve. Everything west of 441 is already preserved. That's already environmentally sensitive. You shouldn't be swapping for stuff like that, but you shouldn't be swapping for something within the ag reserve east of 441. So there are ways and things that have been done in the past, but not a lot, because there's not a lot left out there.
Then the other option, and you know where I stand on the GL land swap, is to take the conservation easement out of the ag reserve and put it in a different portion of the county. Obviously, that's not something that I'm supportive of, and I think everyone knows that at this point. So I guess the question is, how do we know what plan they'll bring back with regards to what they want to do with the conservation easement?
So I think the broader discussion by this board on conservation easements themselves should be held. I think before you start doing it in pieces, decide how you want to address them in the entire county. You can get the list, and I think somebody asked, because you're new, don't know where they all are. Show the map of everything we own that has a conservation easement on it. And look at the implications of a singular discussion on one piece of property. The conservation easement is the key. It was, what was to protect the property, and with all of them all around the county, I think that's the area that you need to address first and find out, okay, if this conservation easement comes off here, what am I getting? I mean, what's the swap? Is it bigger? I mean, Father Leo, he tried to go up to Jupiter Farms and build his kid's place, and we ended up buying that, just to, so he'd go on, and he did. And so it's not up there. But it wasn't working, because it wasn't having the same, the best benefit impact. So I would... So I would say, deal with it globally, collectively, all of them, before you do anything else, and then go from there.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Are there any other questions?
And I was young when I was up there too, by the way, Commissioner Sacks. Right there with Verdinia. Thank you.
Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Lon Tabachnik.
Lon Tabachnik.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm the Vice President of Development from Altman Development Companies, and we are a contract purchaser on the property from Dick, and I wanted to let you know how important we feel this property is to addressing the county's recent bond approval that the county approved, the residents of the county approved, for workforce and affordable housing, as well as this commission approved the essential housing ordinance. We are very much in favor of finding properties in Palm Beach County where we can address this urgent need for workforce housing. And I take exception to the previous speaker. You put workforce housing where the jobs are, not where they have to commute, or not where they have to take mass transit. We don't have a very good mass transit system where you can just hop on a train and go to your place of work. Thank God, the bright lines coming in. Hopefully, you'll have some more stops to take advantage of that. But we are currently building in Palm Beach County now, at the Fountains Country Club. We're building residential multifamily housing with a workforce housing element, and it works very well in these communities. This is an appropriate location for workforce housing. We're tied to a marketplace. This is the live-work-play that Dick talked about. It's a perfect example to take advantage of your new essential housing element, as well as the bond issue that the residents of the county approved. Where else are we going to be able to build these workforce housing units? And the public benefit with the trade-off of giving up a certain amount of conservation for workforce housing? We're talking about over 170 workforce housing units. I don't know of any piece, and we have our employees out looking all over the county, trying to find sites for workforce and affordable housing, based on the fact of your new ordinance, as well as the bond issue. There are just not that many pieces of property where we can deliver something that makes an impact. This is what the residents of the county voted for with their bond issue. Let us have the opportunity to present our plan. We're giving a substantial amount of the conservation easement back based on the essential housing element. So you may be giving up a few acres, but you're getting affordable and workforce housing, and at the right location. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Kay Gates and Sheila Calderon.
I appreciate whoever called for this issue to be put on the ballot. And yes, I'm hoping and looking forward to your doing a workshop, and I appreciate that all of the commissioners up there, and especially the new commissioners, want to understand more about the agricultural reserve. I moved to Palm Beach County in the fall of '98, the first time I was able to vote. In Palm Beach County in the fall of '99 was on the bond issue. Over 70%, 70-some percent of the county voted to say that they wanted agriculture and sensitive lands preserved, and you're here to make sure that that continues to happen. So I hope that you listen up, you learn all you can, and do the best job you can. I am so sick and tired of hearing these developers come up and tout how they're going to include workforce housing in their developments, and then they weasel out of it. Developer after developer has promised workforce housing in the ag reserve. I'd like you to show me one workforce housing in the ag reserve. Maybe there's a couple there that I don't know about, but they have consistently wiggled out of it. Another thing I would like you to follow is the fact that the county did sell this, bought this property for 500, $5.2 million. They sold it back to some of the same concerns for 3.2, because this $2 million was to be in appreciation of their continuing the restrictions to keep agriculture. And that might be an acceptable trade-off. I don't really know that much about the numbers, but I want you to follow that $2 million. And whatever you decide to do on that property, I'm hoping that $2 million goes back to taxpayers who voted for this and have tax money paid for it, and I'm looking to you to make sure that we get our $2 million worth of conservation land. I appreciate whatever you can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Calderon.
I can say good afternoon now. Vice Mayor, Mayor, Commissioners, it's good to be here, but I'm here today, as I have been so many times before, to strongly oppose a text amendment to the county comp plan, which would allow development of the Brookside property as part of the ag reserve. Voters passed the bond, we're all discussing it, right, for the ag reserve overwhelmingly in 1999, and would probably do the same thing again today, to preserve land. We all benefit from encouraging the ag reserve remain devoted to agriculture, and if not growing fruits and veggies, et cetera, to make certain that the land is preserved as green space, to protect our waterways and allow those residents who want to take advantage to enjoy the open areas and natural recreation areas. Every time that we pave over, we are taking away from water conservation and the health of the water community. The county commissioners have been chipping away at the ag reserve, it's been discussed also, which is setting a dangerous precedent that only can result in the demise of the ag reserve. Continued development permitted is just not compatible with agriculture, and I've made that point many times before. The developer included workforce housing stating that 25% of the land would be devoted to it, and as Kay Gates just said, I will confirm the fact that this doesn't seem to be, come to fruition on the plans as they move forward. In so many cases so far, where there's been workforce housing development provided for in the original contract, it has not happened. People that live here and move here for the county, they want to have the open space. Palm Beach County is a beautiful county, and we need to keep it that way. We need to preserve our waterways, which is very important, and our natural recreation areas. Chipping away at the ag reserve by distorting conservation easements sets a dangerous precedent. It risks stripping from the county those assets that make it desirable and unique in South Florida. Additionally, it seems, I read this property and heard it many times tonight, was sold with restrictions for conservation and agricultural use only, and the purchaser agreed to those restrictions. Therefore, the county should have the right to purchase the property back and maintain the use of the property as designated originally. I strongly oppose the text amendment to the county comp plan to allow development of the Brookside property, and encourage you to stand firm in support of the ag reserve. Please do the right thing and reject this text amendment to the Palm Beach County comp plan. Thank you, and I also look forward to the fact that there will be a workshop, that we can learn more.
Thank you. Our next two speakers are Drew Martin and Dagmar Braas.
You want to go first, Dagmar?
No, those are the next two we have, and then Lisa Interlandi, George.
I want to just speak, first of all, Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Ochssetra Group of the Sierra Club. I just want to speak about the election, and the fact that in the registeries of the state, amendments in those counties passed that were in favor of conservation, so that this is a popular issue with both parties. Governor DeSantis ran on an environmental platform. It was endorsed by the Everglades Trust. Now, the county citizens voted overwhelmingly for this bond issue. So you have, you know, talk about contract law, that's a contract. Nobody has said anything about, you know, they keep saying, "Well, the parties are here and the parties are there." The party to this conservation easement is not you. It's me. It's the voters. It's the taxpayers. You're there to represent us. You agreed to buy this land. That was a decision made by the county. And then you sold it because of certain errors in the process. I was going to point a finger, but it was, there were errors in the process, so you sold it. So you gave somebody $5 million, and let me tell you, Mr. Bowman and many of these farmers have gotten very rich off this county. Somebody out there made $100 million, because when the county spent $100 million, somebody was selling land for $100 million. So, you know, if he can't grow the type of vegetables he wants to grow, or because somebody doesn't like the flies, as Mayor Weiss pointed out, he has a right to grow. And there are ways to enhance the soil, and there are ways, and we know with these new organic farming, that there's all kinds of ways to grow things on these properties. So you bought it, somebody made a profit when they bought it back, because now, if they get this development, they're going to make a whole bunch of money at my expense, okay? At my expense. That's who's going to suffer. It's not going to be you. You're all getting a nice salary. But we paid the taxes, we for that bond. You're taking the money out of our pockets. So if you decide, and everybody knows, they'll never build that essential housing, they'll buy their way out of it, because nobody's built that out there yet. The bond money can be used to build it somewhere else. So don't punish us just because maybe they want a special deal from you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dagmar. And it is absolutely ironic that you guys were on the agenda right before this, had a resiliency, regional compact climate change. Thank goodness, it was only a pledge, and you don't really have to do anything. This is a stand that must be taken to preserve conservation preservation easements, my friends, and maybe not some. They want to build 856 units on this property. Please remember that you just approved over 500 apartments right on the other side of Atlantic Avenue with the reserve at Atlantic. It's not like there's a need out there that's not being met. You just approved this. I don't think there's much more than 500 jobs out there, much less the fact that there are other people that already live there, that don't need to have an apartment to live in. All you're going to do is be making more traffic. The place is already a congested mess. The gentleman who wants to be the developer, he talked about the bond referendum and how you need to honor the bond referendum that they just put through for the housing. What about the bond referendum that the people put through for the ag reserve? We worked really hard. Karen Marcus worked on that. I worked on that. A lot of people worked really hard, because the people understood this was important. Dicky Bowman bought this property, never intending to keep farming it. He was an investor. His father, Richard Bowman, was the first at the pot to sell his property in the ag reserve, and he sold out. So they're fine. Don't worry about them financially. The other thing is, there was a consensus. Commissioner Sacks says, "We have to come to a consensus." There was a consensus in 1999 that this ag reserve was important. Open space, farming, equestrian, it's important. Don't make this bond versus bond. Remember what the people in 1999 voted for, preservation. The other thing is, if you lift this conservation-preservation easement, what happens with the GL swap? We don't even need to look at the property up there at the north end of the county. Why don't we just take off their conservation easement as well, and let them build what they want to build? It's going to be the first. It's exactly what happened with the Commerce, the industrial Commerce Centers. How many people were standing in line waiting to put some rights to build Commerce on their property? Do you know what's going to happen if you let this happen and they lift a conservation-preservation easement, especially off of property that was purchased by the people of Palm Beach County, and then you sold it for $2 million less, and now you want to let them build 856 apartments? Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Interlandi, and then George Sonia?
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Interlandi. I'm the Executive Director of the Everglades Law Center. I think that, I just want to say, start off, I want to talk about this project, but I really want to talk about one of the proposals that I heard first. Well, first, let me say, the county has every right to say no to abandoning any conservation easements. That's 100% the county's right, and there's absolutely no need to entertain any project that would do that. Out of hand can just say no, and that's it. That's the county's right, and that's really what we urge you to do. But what I urge you, please, implore you not to do, is to establish a process where developers can come in and bring their projects to consider abandoning conservation easements. Please, never do that. That would be the worst thing ever that I could imagine happening, because every conservation easement in this county would then be in jeopardy. And it's not just the ag reserve. Yeah, it's thousands of acres in the ag reserve. Yeah, it's 30,000 acres of conservation lands. That's not even what I'm worried about. I'm not even worried about that. What I'm worried about is every private developer that is required to preserve land throughout the county. It's everywhere, in every single jurisdiction. Indian Trails, they have hundreds of acres that are going to be under conservation easement. There's other properties throughout the county that are going, that are under conservation easement. And the first time you do this, it won't be the last time. It'll be the first time in a series. So please, have a workshop on this item if you need to. Have a workshop on conservation easements, and how, what we can do to protect them forever and perpetuity, as it was, as expected and intended. Please, never develop a process where we can, where developers come in and seek to remove conservation easements. That would be just a disaster. So for this, you know, look, it undermines the use of conservation easements as a tool county-wide. They could no longer be relied on. So I just urge you, please, not to do that. In this case, promises were made. Promises were made by the county that this land would be protected. Promises were made by the developer that they would accept the terms, and I don't think this is outrageous. I think it is outrageous that they are coming back and seeking this again and again and again. This land is preserved. Conservation lands should be sacrosanct. Conservation easements should not be overturned under any circumstances, unless it is the most special or unique circumstance that could not be resolved in any other manner. In this case, there's flies. Instead of leaving the produce on the ground, just turn it under the soil. I mean, that's a really easy thing that could be done, that doesn't require using conservation lands. Affordable housing and workforce housing, huge issue, I understand that. Look anywhere else but our conservation lands. Our conservation lands should not be used to bail out the affordable housing crisis that we're having. They are not, that is the least part of the cause, and I urge you, please, don't do that. And as far as like the, whether we're reaching the end of development in the ag reserve, we're only getting started if we start releasing conservation easements. Once conservation easements are released, there's thousands more acres that can be developed there. So please, protect our lands forever, in perpetuity, as it was always intended. Thank you so much.
Sir?
Hi. Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here basically because, and it was very interesting to hear all everyone's comments and arguments about everything, and about how to work at, and work out the law systems to make it happen. What I think we need to realize is one thing, all right? I spent this past month, and I took it, because I'm a permaculturalist, and I believe in nature, and in keeping nature as it is. So I went to stay So I went to stay, I went to the indigenous people this past month, and I have pictures I can show you. All right? When we sit here and say we can't grow food because we're limited and farmers are losing money, this earth is not about money. They've taught me one thing, okay? That the land needs to be respected. And I can show you pictures of land that's bountiful, for miles and miles and miles of food, everywhere. And it's all agriculture. We got it wrong. They have it right. We have to protect this earth. We made a pledge. Natural systems. But that's not a pledge. That is reality. They have it. They know it. We lack knowledge. They have it. I was once talking to professors, talking about, well, George, you don't understand. We're trying to make it better. I said, better? How can you make perfect better? And that's what we're talking about here. Respecting the land. Nature is perfect. It gives us everything. Medicine, food, anything and everything we need. But we must protect it. If we do not, what will happen to us? And what would happen to our children, and their children, and their children? I saw eight-year-olds out there loving the land, taking care of it, respecting and growing food. We can do it here. It was embarrassing to me when I left the mountains, which was an eight-hour trip, to come down. And as I kept going, the water kept getting worse, the land kept getting worse, everything kept getting worse. Then I stepped back, my God, we've destroyed this earth. We can make a difference. Agriculture, land is the most important. We must respect it and protect it, and do everything we can, because the climate is a real problem. And only you have the power to do it, but not as individual. One thing I've learned, there is no individualism in our indigenous people. There's community. What benefits the community, not the individual. And I've seen only talk about money and ways to get around, but what about the respect of the community, and the people who live it and want it, cherish it for our children? Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I agree with Lisa Interlandi when she says that we shouldn't open up this, this process in regards to the conservation easement. I think that having the discussion regarding, you know, asking the county attorney and the county administrator to, to create this process, and hearing everybody, I don't think that we should go that route. I think that we should bar that completely and just leave it alone. But I do believe that Lisa also stated that, you know what, if there's a workshop that needs to be had in regards to this item, then we should do that. So what I would propose is just to do a workshop on this item, and let us have a discussion. And also, I know that Commissioner Woodward had mentioned regarding, you know, her questions that she asked. I think that that should be addressed, and also Commissioner Baxter at that workshop, and any other things that needs to be addressed. But in regards to giving staff the direction to create a process, I don't think that's the right approach to go. So my, my suggestion would be, let's eliminate that process, but to do a workshop and to have this item has it, to have its day, and for this board to have a workshop, and what other items that we would like to address at that workshop.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I second it. I second that.
Commissioner Moreno, you're.
Just briefly, I want to make sure that I attributed the first letter I read correctly. It was from the Jupiter Farms Residence Association and the Jupiter Farms Environmental Council. And I agree with Commissioner Bernard. We do need a workshop. We do need more information, but I don't believe we need to engage in a process to release these lands, so.
Is that, are we done with the cards?
We are done with the cards.
Okay. All right. So just understanding what direction that you are getting, then, is a workshop on this item, I assume, and also then to answer some of the other questions, the global issue of the environment, or the environmentally sensitive lands, and updating and educating us all on those that are held by the county, those that are held under private easement. And I don't.
I actually have a comment.
Oh, we have a comment?
From me.
Oh, your light's not on. You're now recognized, sorry.
Thank you. There was a suggestion made about a global view of conservation easements in the county. I think we need to do that. I think we also, when we're doing that, we need to do a global view of properties that would be essential service housing properties, dead malls, towered parking, where there's a lot of just pavement. So these are, and they really should be working together, so maybe that can be incorporated in a future workshop. It's a lot of work, but you know what? We, these are, these are problems that come up, that we are discussing every single meeting. We're discussing essential services housing, workforce housing, however you want to title it, depends on your income. But we're always discussing it, and we do need to really have a global perspective, a county-wide perspective of properties that are available, of talking to the universities that might have land, talking to the faith-based industry, faith-based landowners out there, talking to the mall owners. There, I mean, the corner of Okeechobee Boulevard and Military Trail is pretty much a dead mall. I mean, it's, and it's a lot of pavement. And, you know, I, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the malls, the underlying land use is residential.
In the unincorporated areas.
In the unincorporated areas. We, and we do need, Richard, you're in the room. Richard Radcliffe from League of Cities is in the room. I mean, I know I've said this before, I'll say it again till my last breath. We need to work with the municipalities. This has to be a global perspective. So that might be not part of the workshop on the ag reserve, but... Anybody else want to weigh in on what our direction is?
We have a couple others. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I would like to see this limited to this issue and this, in this property. We're putting a lot on your plate for the staff. I think that what these speakers have been talking about on the global or holistic is absolutely correct, and I agree with Commissioner Moreno. I'd like to see our climate change people definitely come into this, into play with this workshop, because we signed a pledge today. Maybe we need to abide by the pledge when it comes to land available to us in the county. It's owned by the taxpayers. But I'd like to keep it to the four corners of what Commissioner Bernard proposed, and what our staff can handle in, in this period of time. But I absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Moreno. There has to be a discussion on, on what we're doing with all the lands, and how does that fit into essential housing, and how do we keep agriculture as our number one, second to tourism, number one moneymaker in this county.
Commissioner Croner, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'm in agreement on the direction. I don't want to see conservation easements and workforce housing be intertwined. I think it's a false narrative in a lot of ways. Having said that, we, the voters did direct the passage of the bond, and I think we would should incorporate into the, the issue that Commissioner Moreno was talking about, workforce housing and where it can go, that we ought to have a global discussion about what the plan is for the bond, and how we're going to execute on it. And I'm sure Commissioner Bernard has that in the works, and he's led us on this issue, but certainly don't intertwine those issues with the conservation easement.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
I believe it's all already been said. I'm in agreement. I think that we do need to have a workshop specifically on this issue and ag reserve conservation easements, but I would ask it, to put it on the calendar in the future, pretty quickly, that we address all of what you were talking about, because we do need to approach this countywide. All of us have areas in our districts that, that fall into this, and hopefully we can bring, I have a lot of municipalities, we bring some of that discussion in as well, on a, on a separate issue. But this, this, I think, needs to be tackled first, and it's very specific, because there's a lot of designations just for the ag reserve, not elsewhere, that I, I need more clarity on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I agree. I, I would love to see the workshop on this. I agree with Commissioner Bernard. I do not want to set up a process to take away, you know, those conservation easements, but I also agree with Commissioner Sacks in that if we are, this property is a very individualized property from the rest, so I would like the history and to see what, just more information on that. And going forward, I do agree with Commissioner Moreno. I would love to, I don't know if it's at the same workshop, but at a future workshop, address all the possibilities of where workforce housing in correlation to the bond would be available, and rehabbing some lands that are already existing.
All right. Patrick?
I, I did want to say, we're beating you to the punch a little bit on it. You have a workshop scheduled for January that's going to address density, this is based on previous direction, density and workshop items, so Commissioner Moreno on those points. I think there's at least the venue there. If we're not going to touch on all of the points you're looking for, we can take that up in January as well, and all the way, promotion, I have a follow-up question on board direction.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Yeah, if I may, we have a motion on, on the table. We've seconded. I'd like to move forward on what Commissioner Bernard said, and I, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Rutter. We want to work on this issue first. I mean, if, if it is the direction of the entire board, but that was the direction that, that we, that was the motion on the table. It has been seconded. We've had discussion. I'd like to move forward on it, if we could, Mayor.
Actually, I'd like to get the clerk to, are you, did you note a motion? And if so, can you repeat it?
I have the direction, but if you want to do a formal motion, you can go ahead, and I'll, I'll get it.
Can you repeat, can you repeat your, what you have as recorded as direction?
Sure. Direction for a workshop on this item, and to answer questions about environmentally sensitive land, and educating on those held by the county, and those held by private easement. And it was by Commissioner Bernard, and then seconded by Vice Mayor Sacks.
All right. Is that, is that, does that clearly identify your, what your intent was, Commissioner Bernard?
So I, the question, I don't know if we need, I don't think we need a motion. This is just a staff direction issue, correct?
Correct. It could be.
So do, do we need a motion?
We could absolutely take that as direction, if I could, and tighten it up a little bit, if you don't mind.
What would you like to have tightened up?
One question I would ask is, would that include direction to work with the applicant, the property owner, and offer them an opportunity to be part of a presentation, or any information sharing that they would, that you might, board might want to hear as well?
I think what we should do is just create, probably just create this item as a separate item by itself, and then, and then we would do another workshop on...
So what I would understand is, I heard some of the other points, too, back to the, I'll call it the basic tenants of the ag reserve, and some points we need to reboot on. So I'm mentally dusting off some of previous presentations, hitting some of those higher points, include that in it, maybe work through development scenarios that are available in the ag reserve, and then working our way into the specifics of this one again, and the mechanics. Does that sound?
Hang on a second. Commissioner, Administrator Baker, and then we'll come to Commissioner Sacks, or Vice Mayor Sacks.
I was going to follow up with Patrick. We can do this on a workshop day. We can do one separate workshop just on providing all of the background history, et cetera, on the ag reserve, because that could take two weeks, but we can do it in one session. And then we can, following up on that same day, we can then address this particular issue, because then you'll have all the history of the ag reserve, how we got to where we are today. And then, once that occurs, then we can address in a separate workshop on the same day, this particular issue as far as restrictions are concerned covenant. And then you can tell us what to do after that.
Yes. And then we would do another workshop on the issue that Commissioner Moreno mentioned, and that's been addressed.
Okay.
But the housing issue, we've already talked about, and I think we've got something scheduled for you in January.
January, you have a January workshop available, that's a two-hour block, that is scheduled for January 31st. Housing and workforce housing.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Sacks.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand. So on one day in the morning, we're going to review all the issues of conservation easements in the ag reserve in the morning. This is a big, this is, you know, this is a lot to, lot to digest. And then in the afternoon, we're going to specify that there will be a open discussion on one particular site, the one that has come before us today. Is that the understanding, Commissioner Baker, I mean, Boss Baker?
Administrator.
It's all Boss Baker.
It's more than sufficient for me. What I'm proposing for this board, and I, I hope you accept that, is in the morning, yes, we'll talk about the ag reserve. We're going to give you all the history, the acreage, all that, you know, starting from a plan that we first developed, blah, 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 blah. And some of you, it will be old information, but it's always new. And then when that is completed, then we'll start with the second workshop, which will deal just with this issue.
That sounds good.
And to follow up on Patrick, I, unless this board tells me otherwise, I have no issue with working with Mr. Perry and that group to make sure that you hear it from all sides. You got, you're hearing from staff. This will allow Mr. Perry to provide his information, because I really don't know what's being proposed for this. It was a surprise when it came up, and it would be helpful to hear from Mr. Perry on what is being proposed. There may be some, I don't know, some miracle that happens. It's Christmas. And so, but at least we can get that. We can work, we will have the housing workshop, we will keep that on January, unless the board tells me otherwise. And then we can, February 28th is the next workshop. Is that going to be sufficient time? Or should we do, push it back to March? I'm thinking we should maybe push it back to March. That gives us time to talk to Mr. Perry, and then work out with our legal folks, so we have enough information. And then we can also digest what direction you give us as far as housing is concerned at the January meeting as well.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. I agree. And I think that, that the, it's good to digest the first part about the housing, and then to give everybody sufficient time to put our, our, you know, our, our projects together for the big discussion on, on the ag reserve, and specifically, to give time for this applicant to have the time to present what they, what they are thinking of, of developing there. So I certainly would agree to March. And thank you, Administrator Baker, and thank you, staff. It's a lot of work to do, but it's not like we haven't done a little bit of it before, but very informational for our new commissioners as well.
Thank you. Okay. I think, I think we're clear on direction. I want to say, I, first off, I appreciate staff, your work. I appreciate Mr. Perry, Mr. Bowman, for your interest on this, and time we've spent. I want to also say that I, I support my colleagues here in, in not wanting to have a process created to do that, because, in, in relation to these easements, because I, I think that could be very detrimental and not a good thing, so thank you for that. Now, on to the important things.
Could I just ask a question? I, it's, it's part of the process. Is it possible to have a seat at the table for the members of the public, so that we can be part of the discussion early on, and are not hearing it from here?
Can you include, can you include all interested parties?
We've been to this dance quite a few times, so I have no issue with, you know, having us all in the same room. We'll set up something and get the information out.
We'll organize ourselves. It just gives us equal sort of... It just gives us equal sort of opportunity and it's probably less time for y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the important things. Not to say that this wasn't, but it is now 20 minutes to one. We have matters by the public is at 2:00 PM. We have a number of items still on our agenda. I, I expect that some of them may also involve some significant discussion. So I'm asking for you all what you would like to do. Your options are, we could try and get through as much as we can till 1:00. If you want to take a break at 1:00 to 2:00 or if you want to power through and whatever you get between now and 2:00 is what you get.
Why don't we go to 1:30? I don't think we need to.
You want to try and go to 1:30 and then break?
Oh, no.
If we need to?
No.
No, I'm hearing no, I'm hearing...
And then we come back at 1:30?
No. We, I mean, we, we have, we have all sorts of options, but I just, I want to hear from, from you all what you would like to do. Commissioner Kerner?
I, I don't have any particular preference, but I would like to, if maybe reorder the agenda to take up the airport item because we have many people here and we can probably get it resolved somewhat quickly and then they can go home. Is that possible, Mayor?
Okay. So, so we have a motion to reorder the agenda by Commissioner Kerner to move item, I believe it's, I gotta put on my glasses.
5G1.
5G1 as the next item that would come in front of 5D1.
I second that motion.
We have, and we have a second. Okay. So we'll move on to that item depending on where we, where we get with that. If we need to, we then may need to consider a break or, or something. And I'm look, what, you need a break?
I have a five-minute break.
We need a five, okay. We need a five-minute break right now. So let's come back. I know five minutes is short, so let's be back at 10 minutes to one. Okay. So it's 12:50. We'll take a seven-minute break. Take your seats. Asking my fellow board members if you're in the room, if you can come back to the And in speaking with the clerk, I...
Thank you.
I made it, I must have made an error. We never voted on reordering the agenda, so with that, we have a motion and a second to reorder the agenda. All in favor, all opposed. This motion carries unanimously. The agenda has been reordered. Now, Ms. Beebe, you are recognized for your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Board of County Commissioners. We have a fairly lengthy presentation today. It may rehash some of the information that you already know about the airport system, but we think that it's important for the benefit of the public and our new commissioners. So as you all know, I'm Laura Beebe. I'm the Director of Airports of the Palm Beach County Department of Airports. Today I have with me Gary Seipack, our Senior Deputy Director, Stephen Oset, who's with Kaplan, Kersh and Rockwell, who is our outside counsel related to the issues that are before you today, and Annie Helfand, Assistant County, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So the purpose of today's agenda item is to brief the board on the court's denial of the petition for review for the FAA's final agency decision regarding the Lantana jet restriction and to obtain board approval to submit a corrective action plan as requested by the, as required by the final agency decision. And just for a brief overview of some background of, of our Department of Airports, the county has a system of four airports, the Palm Beach International Airport, the North County General Aviation Airport, the Lantana Airport, which is also known as the Palm Beach County Park Airport, and the Palm Beach County Glades Airport, also known as the Pokie Airport. The department operates as enterprise fund with no ad valorem tax support. Operations and maintenance are funded by user fees paid by businesses operating at the airport and passengers. Capital improvements are primarily funded by external funding sources such as federal and state grants and passenger facility fees. Just a short overview of our roles and responsibilities. The FAA has exclusive jurisdiction over aviation safety and navigable airspace. The FAA also regulates and funds public use airports. The county is responsible for the maintenance and operation of its airports and the FAA provides substantial amounts of funding in the form of grants for county capital improvements. A brief overview of our obligations. Every single year, the county enters into grant agreements with the Federal Aviation Administration and in those agreements, the county agrees to comply with all federal laws and the county, in that the county's authority to impose passenger facility fees may be terminated in the event the county fails to comply with those laws. Every year, the county enters into grants agreements with the Florida Department of Transportation agreeing to comply with all state and federal laws and to maintain its federal funding eligibility and to avoid any action that would render the county's airports ineligible for federal funding. So this is just a overview of our external funding sources. As you can see, the county receives millions of dollars in state and federal grant funding in support of its capital improvement program every single year. We currently have more than 123 million active grants that are both federal and state and approximately $200 million in approved PFC projects. Funding sources include the, the recent bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law, which have two different grant programs, the airport infrastructure grants, which is an allocation of nine to 10 million dollars a year commencing in fiscal year 2022, and the airport terminal program grants program, which is a discretionary grant program. We have just applied for 10.5 million dollars in that program. We're competing for that currently. We also receive airport improvement program grants, which are based on allocations and discretionary, FDOT grants and passenger facility fees. Here are some examples of projects that require external funding and this is just a kind of highlights list. It is not a comprehensive list. As you'll see on the next two slides, a wide variety of projects are funded at every county airport with external funding sources, including expansion projects necessary to accommodate demand such as the Concourse B expansion project and a runway expansion project at the North County Airport, various airfield improvement projects necessary to ensure compliance with FAA safety standards and requirements such as the PBI Central Airfield Project and taxiway rehabilitation projects, security improvements and projects to ensure the preservation of airport facilities. For example, electrical improvements, road and bridge improvements and fuel farm improvements. Our continued eligibility to receive external funding sources is not only critical to ensuring the county's airport system remains financially self-sustaining, but to ensuring that we're able to continue to maintain our airport facilities in a safe and serviceable condition. Now I'm going to give you a very brief overview of the history of the jet restriction. The county's 50-year jet restriction has a long and complicated history. In short, the county adopted a restriction prohibiting all jet aircraft in 1973, which was repealed in 1988. In 1990, Congress enacted the Airport Noise and Capacity Act of 1990 significantly restricting an airport owner's authority to adopt restrictions on the operation of aircraft. In 1991, the county entered into an inter-local agreement with the City of Atlantis adopting guidelines for the restriction of pure turbojet aircraft unless FAA regulations prohibit the enforcement thereof. In 1998, the, the restriction was codified in the airport rules and regulations. The county has vigorously defended this restriction for more than 20 years and now I'm going to turn it over to Steve's who can update you on the status of the most recent legal challenge and our recommended response.
Thanks Laura and good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. So let me just briefly summarize the, the jet restriction litigation and where we are today. So this complaint was initially filed back in 2017 and in February of 2019, the FAA issued what's called a director's determination, which is the first level of administrative review, finding that the jet restriction was adopted in violation of federal law. That law being the Airport Noise and Capacity Act that Laura mentioned was adopted in 1990. And it also violated the county's grant assurance agreements with the FAA, which require, among other things, that access be provided to the airport on reasonable and not unjustly discriminatory terms. So the FAA ordered the county submit, to submit a corrective action plan committing to rescinding the jet restriction at that time. Rather than submitting a corrective action plan, we appealed the director's determination to a second level of administrative review before the FAA. The FAA issued a, what's, what's called a final agency decision, which is signed by the Associate Administrator for Airports, the highest official within the FAA with responsibility. It's a political appointment. And that final agency decision upheld the director's determination, finding that indeed the jet restriction violated federal law. Again, the FAA ordered the counties to submit a corrective action plan. The county did not submit a corrective action plan. Rather, we appealed the final agency decision to the United States Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit. The 11th Circuit reviewed the FAA's decision and found that the FAA's decision was proper, that the county's adoption of the jet restriction did indeed violate ANCA and violates the county's grant assurance obligations. So as a result, the Court of Appeals upheld the FAA's final agency decision, which requires the county to submit a corrective action plan for the FAA's approval that permits immediate access by jet aircraft to Lantana, by aircraft that are capable of using Lantana, and providing a formal commitment to rescind or not enforce the restriction. A couple of, of significant findings from the Court of Appeals. First, the, the count, the court found that the county repealed the jet restriction by ordinance in 1988. Now, we argued before the court unsuccessfully that the language of ANCA, that Airport Noise and Capacity Act, did not require the jet restriction to be codified as long as it was continuously in, in force since before ANCA was adopted. The, the court rejected that claim. We also argued that the 1988 ordinance was not actually effective under Florida law to repeal the jet restriction and the court rejected that claim as well. Accordingly, the court found that when the county sought to reintroduce the jet restriction in 1998, after ANCA's adoption, the county was required to comply with ANCA. It did not comply with ANCA and there is no dispute about that. And therefore, the, the jet restriction violated ANCA and was unreasonable per se under the grant assurances. Independent of ANCA, the FAA had also found that even if ANCA did not apply, if the, if the restriction was so-called entitled to grandfathering protection under ANCA, it nevertheless violated the county's grant agreements with the FAA because it was a restriction that was unreasonable and discriminatory. The county argued both to the FAA and to the court that the jet restriction was in fact necessary for safety and efficiency reasons, but the FAA rejected that argument and the court found that the FAA's rejection of that argument was based on substantial evidence in the proceeding. So where does this leave us? Well, the FAA is required by Congress to administer ANCA and the grant assurances. The FAA has concluded that the county's actions violate federal law. A review in court has found that the FAA applied the law correctly and based its decisions on substantial evidence. So short of opportunities for rehearing or further appeal, which we don't recommend and I will get into that momentarily, that means that the county must comply with the law. And the law, as the FAA directs, requires a corrective action plan to be submitted to the FAA and the immediate action to rescind the jet restriction. Now, I want to be clear that the court's decision does not mean that the county cannot pursue other means of addressing noise, safety, airspace efficiency concerns at Lantana. The court's determination also does not mean that there are in fact no noise, safety or efficiency problems at Lantana. It only means that the jet restriction, after 20 years of litigation, has been determined to be unlawful and cannot be upheld on those or any other basis. So our recommendation is that the county submit a corrective action plan and to bring the county back into compliance with federal law and FAA requirements, which will also restore the county's access to those essential grant funds that Laura just went over. So let me just briefly run through what that corrective action plan will look like and then I'll circle back to why we don't recommend other options. So first, the, the corrective action plan would commit the county to rescinding the jet restriction in accordance with Florida law, which as I understand it, would require a resolution being brought before the commissioners and then a period of time where that resolution will be posted in public newspapers before the jet restriction is ultimately rescinded. The county will notify the initial complainant that he may lawfully operate jet aircraft immediately at the Lantana Airport. The county would take various actions to remove notations that exist in official publications that Lantana is closed to jet aircraft. The county will publicly commit to continue suspending its enforcement of the jet restriction until such time that it is formally repealed. The county will inform the City of Atlantis that it is unable to continue to enforce the jet restriction as it is set forth in an inter-local government agreement between those parties. And the county will proceed promptly with the completion of the Part 150 Noise Compatibility Study, which as you will recall, is intended to evaluate the environmental or the, the noise impacts in and around Lantana. And with completing the, the forecast after the court's decision, those noise impacts will consider the impact of jet aircraft, both in the near term and over the forecast So actually, before I get into that, let, let me just explain why this corrective action plan, as we've outlined it here, is not contingent on any additional safety analysis or environmental assessments conducted by the FAA. First, we, as I mentioned, have vigorously argued before the FAA and the court that additional safety analysis was required before the jet restriction could be rescinded. The FAA disagreed, found that jets could safely be operated at Lantana and the court agreed with that decision and found that the FAA's decision was based on substantial evidence. Therefore, as a matter of federal law, jets can operate safely at this airport. It wouldn't be appropriate, in our view, for us to condition our corrective action upon further safety analysis by the FAA when the FAA and the courts have already concluded that jets can operate safely. Now, others may disagree, pilots may disagree, that this is a safe environment to operate in and this, and, and committing to corrective action plan, to corrective action doesn't preclude our ability to continue to press those arguments before the agency, but it does preclude our ability to continue defending the jet restriction on that basis. Second, the FAA is obligated to conduct an environmental assessment only when the FAA has a federal action that it is taking. Now, we argued that the FAA could not order the repeal of the jet restriction without conducting an environmental assessment that complies with the National Environmental Policy Act. The FAA rejected that argument as well because in fact by law, agency enforcement actions are not considered actions that are subject to NEPA. Further, the FAA has never before conducted an environmental assessment on its approval of a corrective action plan. And again, this is our corrective action, so it would not be appropriate to condition our compliance with federal law on additional actions that the FAA needs to take when those actions are not necessary for us to restore our compliance. So as far as other options, first, and, and perhaps this is obvious, but ignoring the court's opinion is technically an option, not a very good one. The county would continue to violate federal law, which not only jeopardizes grant funding, but could cause the FAA to take further action, including seeking injunctive relief against the county. the county withholding additional sources of funding or potentially seeking to suspend the county's ability to assess passenger facility charges at Palm Beach International. A petition for panel rehearing is an opportunity to petition the three-judge panel on the Court of Appeals that decided the case to rehear the case, or at least to modify some aspect of its decision. This is not a mechanism to reargue any of the issues that were before the court initially, but rather to bring to the panel's attention material errors in fact, or material errors of law that are in the opinion. These types of petitions are very rarely granted. One of the reasons why is because it's the same panel of three judges that receives that petition for rehearing, and obviously, they have already passed on the merits of those arguments. But here, neither we nor the city's council have identified any material error of law or fact. To be sure, there are frustrating parts of the decision. There are arguments we presented to the court which aren't specifically addressed. There are things that we wish could have been made clearer, but it's unlikely that any of those items would change the ultimate outcome of the case. And of course, it's quite common on complex litigation such as this for the court to fail to address each and every argument and issue that's presented by the parties. The two other options are to seek a petition for rehearing en banc, that is asking the 11th Circuit to rehear the case, not just with those panels of three judges, but with all judges appointed to the 11th Circuit. This is a pretty extraordinary remedy. There are very few cases every year that are heard en banc. It requires the county to demonstrate that rehearing by all judges is necessary to maintain the uniformity of the court's decisions, or involves a question of federal law of exceeding national importance. In most cases where an en banc hearing is granted, there is a dissenting opinion from one of the judges on the three-judge panel that was not present here. And then the standard for a petition for writ of certiorari to the United States Supreme Court is very similar. The court, the right to seek review, there is no right to seek review in the United States Supreme Court. All of those reviews are a matter of the court's discretion. They grant very, very few petitions for certiorari, and generally, only when necessary to resolve a conflict with an existing Supreme Court opinion, or to revolve conflicts among the other courts of appeal across the country. And we have not identified any issues in the case that rise to that level. So let me turn it back to Laura to discuss the matter further.
So if the county continues to violate the FAA's order, there are a variety of things that will happen, and I'm not going to suggest they will all immediately happen. Some have happened, and some will happen. It's kind of like a domino effect. First and foremost, the county would continue to be violating federal law, which is significant, as I explained, our contractual requirements require us to comply with federal law. We would eventually lose our FAA and FDOT funding, some of which is currently being withheld, including all of our bipartisan infrastructure law grant funding for fiscal year 2022 and 2023, which is about $20 million. We have also applied for a discretionary grant with the FAA under the Bill program that the FAA actually encouraged us to submit for $10.5 million. That also requires our compliance with federal law in order to be considered for this program. We would eventually lose our authority to collect passenger facility fees. Those are substantial. We collect about $12 million annually. That's a $4.50 charge on every in-plane passenger ticket, which is collected by the airlines and remitted to the Department of Airports in accordance with federal law. It would significantly reduce the county's ability to fund necessary projects, which ensure the safe and efficient operation of the county's airport systems. As I had mentioned, many of our projects are rehabilitation projects that are required to ensure they're meeting federal standards. It would eventually increase our airline costs and risks due to our inability to receive external funding. The airlines agree to fund the cost of our airfield, essentially, in the event that we're unable to do it for the Palm Beach International Airport. It would likely reduce our bond ratings. We're getting calls every six months from the bond rating companies since COVID to talk about our financial position. That is something that they care very much about, and they often refer to our significant financial position, low debt, and that our ability to fund our capital projects. And it will ultimately require increased user fees to help offset shortfalls. So our recommended action, next steps, would be to approve a resolution repealing the jet restriction at the January 24th board meeting, submit a corrective action plan to the FAA, and also complete the Part 150 Noise Compatibility Study, including the development of noise exposure maps, draft noise mitigation measures, and coordination with the Technical and Citizen Advisory Committees that were established as part of that program. And I'd like to note that that program is being federally funded for us to move forward with the project. As a result of our current litigation, the FAA will not let us proceed with that project until this situation is resolved. We would then implement the noise mitigation measures, and as Steve has indicated, we'll continue to engage with the FAA to mitigate noise and enhance safety, which could include discussion of additional airspace procedures, with the understanding that a complete jet ban will not be the ultimate result. That is not a likely result that we will see with any discussion with the Federal Aviation Administration, but we certainly can talk to them about whether or not additional airspace procedures are warranted. Now, I'd also like to point out, the FAA has made it absolutely 100% clear to us that it will not have any further discussions with us on these issues until the county is in compliance with federal law. And after that, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Are there any questions from the board at this point? All right. We have some cards, so we have some folks from the public that wish to be heard on this matter.
At this moment, we have seven speaking cards. Alan Callback, and then Mariette Adam de Villiers. And I'm sure I butchered that, and I apologize. I tried my best. I'm Italian, not French.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Commission. My name is Alan Callback. I am Vice Mayor of the City of Atlantis, and it's the designated representative of the City Council on Lantana Airport matters. We greatly appreciate the support and collaboration that we've had with the county on the issue related to jets landing at Lantana Airport. And I had distributed a letter last Friday detailing concerns that the city had and making some considerations that we thought you ought to take under advice as the corrective action plan moves forward. Also, this morning, I distributed kind of a summary of my remarks to you. However, it just came to my attention, and I've just reviewed a letter that came from Mr. Ossit's firm, and I did not have the benefit of that, so I'm going to modify my comments that you have in writing a little bit. First and foremost, neither the comments that I gave you this morning, nor my letter, ever suggested that we are resisting the jet ban, or that we think it should be continued to be fought. We understand that we fought the good fight with the county, and it was decided by the court, and there's no further appeal that we've asked for or fighting of the jet ban. So in that memo that I saw this morning from Kirsch Kaplan, there are some characterizations that are either implicit or explicit that I would characterize as mischaracterizations. So we're not asking to fight the jet ban. Secondly, never ask to delay the corrective action plan. What we said is, in cooperation or concurrently with the corrective action plan, there ought to be a detailed safety assessment of what's going on at Lantana right now with the introduction of jets, and under NEPA, there's a requirement for an independent review of an environmental assessment. Now, let's step back for a second. The facts that we're talking about here, and these are the facts, is that for 50 years, there was a jet ban, almost 50 years, in effect. For most of those years, up until 2017, the FAA concurred with that. The development of the airport, all operations at the airport, residential development, all was in mind that there was a jet ban there. Now, there was a decision to lift that. So now, and as Commissioner Kerner and Commissioner, Mayor Weiss discussed at the very first meeting when the appeal was decided, you're introducing a whole new class of aircraft operating at a very high speed into a small general aviation airport that has piston-driven aircraft and helicopters moving at very slow speeds, and has four flight schools with limited runway lengths and constrained approaches in terms of getting in and out of the airport because of modifications to standards recognizing that there are obstructions. So into that, after 50 years, you are introducing these high-speed aircraft, okay? Jets. Now, there's a reference in the memorandum that you received to the court adhering to the technical analysis and the FAA's finding that this was safe. Well, I don't know. I've been asking for the safety analysis. I don't think the department has a safety analysis from the airport, or excuse me, from the FAA, but through one of the members of our congressional delegation, the FAA produced a page-and-a-half form copy of their safety assessment of allowing jets to land at Lantana Airport. It's unbelievable that this is the basis upon which there's substantial evidence, if I could, I'd like a little bit more time, that this is a basis of substantial evidence for safe operations at Lantana Airport. I respectfully submit to you that under the circumstances that are existent right now, the county should go forward with a corrective action plan, but it should also request that a detailed safety assessment be conducted, because under their own procedures, and I cited that in my letter, and I won't go into all that, their own procedures require it, and NEPA requires it. Now, you know, I'm doing this because I feel I have an obligation as an elected representative of Atlantis, that I've taken all necessary steps to make sure that there is not some unfortunate accident occurs. I'm sorry?
I just, because we've gone over the time limit, but I see Commissioner Kerner has a question, so let's, if he might be able to do that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor. So is there a prohibition on our ability, I guess I'll direct the question to council, is there a prohibition to request that the FAA do safety study as part of our corrective action plan?
As part of the corrective action plan, there is no prohibition, but recall that the corrective action is the county's corrective action. So it would certainly be appropriate to make that request in connection with the corrective action plan, but not to condition your corrective action on that assessment.
Sure. And I think that was the suggestion. Were there any other suggestions, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Atlantis, that you wanted to communicate to the board?
Well, the other was that they conduct the NEPA assessment, which, as the law firm's memo suggests, they were open to doing, and especially given the fact that you are introducing this whole new fleet in. And as I said, I would remind you, I don't think it's inappropriate to ask questions and ask detail of a federal agency that's responsible for safety at the airport. I mean, these are the same people that brought you the 737 MAX and the problems that's gone on at Boeing, because nobody asks questions. And I think it's our responsibility as public officials to ask questions, because, as I said, God forbid there's an accident. I mean, the county is the owner of the airport. The county has presumably the liability and the responsibility. We're all next-door neighbors, and God forbid something happens, and we haven't taken every step to make sure that, you know, we're all safe. So that's, there are other points I could make, but I think you got the gist of it. And I would certainly hope that we go forward with this. And as I said, to the extent that there's resistance, then I think the congressional delegation should be contacted, because where is oversight in this? And as I said, the flimsy analysis that was done is a disgrace. And I'll be happy to give you the copy of what I got from the congressman's office. And as I said, I don't think that should be acceptable to the county or to any of us as public officials. Thank you.
And I just want to say, Vice Mayor, thank you for, number one, for being here and your advocacy over the years and working so closely with us on this matter, and spending time, a long time this morning with us to get to this point. I just want to make sure, and I know you said you had some other items, and if there was anything else that we may have in addition to the NEPA and the safety review.
Yeah, just one other thing I think is important. As I said, we've really appreciated the collaboration. I think we had very good collaboration between Mr. Ossit's firm and the city's council and technical advisors, and we worked well in the development of all the submissions to the 11th Circuit. I would hope we'd maintain the same collaboration going forward in trying to get a transparent process that deals with the safety issues that are related to the airport. And the memo seems, and this is a problem, and you'll hear this from some of the other residents that are here to speak today, it's always kind of, hey, well, you go to the FAA. We don't own the airport. We don't have any control over the airport. We really need to be collaborating with the county, and the county's saying, not our problem, it's the FAA. You go deal with the FAA. I think this is something where, as public officials, city and county, we should be working together so that it's not all on the residents to try and fire, and things go to the etherland. I mean, you'll hear that from some people here. When it goes to the FAA, nobody ever gets a response. So I would just ask, please, that we continue the collaboration to get the right process to get this resolved, and thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Before we go on, I just, turning to staff, with this issue, and I know it's frustrating for myself and my office, and I'm sure Commissioner Kerner's office, we make these complaints, the residents find an issue going on, a safety concern, aircraft flying maybe too low, and it does seem to go into the ether. Has the FAA indicated to you what, why? I mean, we never seem to hear anything back about what they've done.
So we did contact the Flight Standards District Office, the Miami office, and inquired about that. When a complaint comes in, they assign a complaint number to it, they do an investigation, and then they either continue with some sort of action, or they close the case. Pursuant to their policies, they don't release that information to the public or to the airport without a FOIA request. So the information is available. However, we would need to submit a FOIA request in order to obtain it.
And is that the policy throughout the entire nation?
That is what we've been told.
Yeah. Well, maybe that's something we can take up with our congressional delegation.
I'd also like to point out that I did send a letter independently to the FAA requesting a safety assessment, and the response that I received was that we will talk to you once you're in compliance with federal law.
All right. Thank you.
And we're all in favor of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Mariette Adam de Villiers. For the last two years, I've been a resident of Lake Osborne Estates, and I'm currently serving as the president of its civic association. I speak to you today representing both roles as a resident and a representative of my community, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a front row seat, literally, of the view and activity at the airport. For me, it all started when I was conducting business over a virtual meeting, and I was suddenly unable to hear myself talk. It was like an episode of MASH, or a replica of what one might have experienced during the Vietnam War. Please ponder on this comparison, and what type of feeling the wildlife and human beings are subjected to daily, like a war zone. The anxiety, the nuisance and disturbance, the fear, the uncertainty, and what I have learned in all this time is that there is no one protecting us. The FAA has overtaken the county's authority and ability to protect its people and all of the park's environment, for which the Park Airport was supposed to be a good neighbor. Helicopters and single-wing aircraft are flying out of LNA jointly, parallel, going all directions, and at significantly low altitudes, over and over again, for hours, all in one single day, and that can be at any time of the day or night. Frequently, I'm waking up before my alarm clock goes off at the noise of an aircraft flying 40 feet above my roof. For a split second, I wonder, after all, 14 years ago, an aircraft crashed into my next-door neighbor's house, and two people died. My windows shake, my animals jump, and I gasp until I realize that it's past. Then I go to bed with a buzzing headache when an aircraft coming from Fort Lauderdale or other decides to night train at the Lauderdale or other decides to night train at the airport, circling around 20 times until midnight. History shows that the land of the airport was donated to the county, under the condition that the land be dedicated to serving the public, not hinder the public. Yet now, when residents have carried the burden to report concerning activity, no one is held accountable. There are no enforceable rules and regulations to protect the public. There was never a safety and environmental study done when the helicopters were added in this mix. Now, we ask that this board ensure that these appropriate studies are completed. As the opinion of the 11th Circuit Court stated, "The FAA may modify or revoke an assignment of airspace when required in the public interest." Make this happen, or it will be no surprise when, not if, a tragedy occurs. Please continue to prioritize the safety and well-being of your constituents and the future generations to come. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next up is Joseph Lobionco and Jonathan Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Lobionco. I'm a resident of Lake Osborne Estates, and I live directly across from the Lantana Park Airport. For the last 22 years, I've worked for the state of Florida assessing safety and risk for families. An unfortunate trend that I've observed throughout my career is that it takes a tragedy to create change. It's only after that tragedy that the system looks at itself and creates the improvements necessary to prevent it from happening again. Today, I implore you not to replicate this terrible governmental trend and be proactive. The more variables added to this airport will only increase the chances of future tragedy. I applaud the county for appealing all the initial FAA rulings allowing jets. And despite the disappointing outcome, now is not the time to let it go. The county cannot put money over the safety and well-being of the public, especially since safety and well-being has not been addressed. In the last year, we have experienced numerous jets using the airport, and their presence is menacing. What I fear most is what the future holds. To think there will be no restrictions, jet training, jet maintenance, gas station stops for transient gens, passenger terminals, increase in these activities only adds to an already saturated environment. I have witnessed jets taking off and flying just a few feet over my roof. The ground shakes, my house shakes, the whistling is deafening, not to mention the invisible danger from jet fuel emissions. I have witnessed these large, powerful aircraft unable to gain altitude, using every single inch of the runway to the very edge of the lake, barely missing the top of the branches of my tallest tree. A tree that I don't cut down because this is the only enforcement of the minimal altitude and protection I have. The residents surrounding LNA have written hundreds of emails to this board addressing the overcongestion of this airport. When the jets land, they don't choose a runway according to the winds like other aircraft. It's a collision waiting to happen. Commissioners, as you consider a corrective action plan, you must include a safety and environmental assessment that will describe the impact and incompatibility the airport has with large aircrafts such as jets. The FAA must be given reason to reconsider the restrictions of the airspace at Lantana Park Airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you for having me. I am Jonathan Miller. I am one of the owners of the fixed-based operator at the Palm Beach County Park Airport, under a long-term agreement with the county. We've been there since 2014. And we have spent, in our prior lives, about 20 years in this industry at airports ranging from the Boca Raton Airport back in 1984, all the way up through Orlando International. So airports of all sizes in all different areas of the state. These issues that we're talking about are not exclusive to Lantana. We have dealt with them successfully at the Boca Raton Airport many years ago. There are prescribed methodologies to try to investigate in a cooperative manner with all the parties involved, to try to come up with some reasonable operating standards, or reasonable suggestions, or reasonable improvements, all of which would be, you know, complied, would comply with the FAA requirements. So they are generally done through the Part 150 study. And because that Part 150 study has been on hold throughout this entire process, a lot of the issues that the neighbors have, many of which are justifiable, those issues have not been dealt with, they have not been given a good hearing, and they have not had independent experts come up with solutions that have been in place and successfully been employed at other airports. That has not happened because this fight continues and has continued. So I would encourage the, you know, approval of the corrective action plan, so it can go forward, get submitted to the FAA, you maintain your compliance, and then we can get on with what I believe will be the true solution to a lot of these issues, which is completion of the Part 150 study, coming up with reasonable recommendations that will be upheld at the FAA level, and that will address many, maybe not all, but many of the concerns of the neighbors. Okay? And that is primarily going to, you know, focus on noise. And I think a lot of these noise issues from the past have now morphed into safety issues because, guess what? The noise issues aren't gaining a lot of traction, at least with the FAA or the courts. So I have listened to the characterization. I have my general manager here who's on site every day. Our characterization of the jet operations would be in direct contravention of that. But that's not my argument. That is for an independent, you know, a body to figure out. So, safety, there are ways to deal with safety concerns. Okay? Having a police officer on site. My people aren't air traffic controllers. They're not trained to say who, what aircraft is too close, what aircraft is in violation of something. If you had a control tower there, you would have that ability to know who the quote-unquote "bad actors" are, and to address anybody operating in an unsafe manner. So that's one thing, maybe doesn't come out of Part 150 study, but there are many things that we can do. And we, at Stellar Aviation, have always been a party, and a cooperative party, in dealing with the neighbors, in dealing with the county commission, who's our landlord. And we stand by today and in the future to maintain a cooperative stance to try to mitigate these issues as best that we all can. Because we recognize that we're a neighbor just like, to them like they are to us. And I want you to be assured that that is the way that we'll conduct ourselves in the future.
Mr. Miller, I believe Commissioner Woodward has a question for you.
Yes, thank you. As someone who lives less than a mile from the Boca Airport, I can say that whatever you guys did, I'd say it was a good job. I would like to know, you mentioned air traffic control. Is that something that Lantana could benefit from? I mean, as I understand it, there's no air traffic control there. Is that correct?
Correct. In my experience, there are many, probably hundreds, if not thousands, of airports of similar size, maybe slightly bigger, some slightly smaller, that have all three types of aircraft operating: fixed wing, helicopters, and turbine aircraft, jet aircraft. It's not uncommon to see that mix of aircraft at airports. It's not. This airport, because of the general level of activity with the flight schools and the helicopter flight schools, there are a lot of operations at that airport, maybe as it compares to some of those other airports. I believe that a control tower would help manage the airspace in a more effective manner. I believe that they would have more detailed records to determine who's outside the pattern, who's, you know, who's in violation of some of the reasonable standards we come up with. So they can be a little bit of a traffic cop that isn't there right now. Some people would argue, oh, you're going to put a control tower in, you're going to have more operations, that's going to invite more pilots in because they feel safer. The reality of it is, in Boca, before we had a control tower, the operations did not dramatically go up after the control tower came in. The operations will go up based on general economic activity, right? As Boca Raton grew, from a bedroom community to corporate headquarters, of course, the operations went up. But it wasn't because of the presence of a control tower. So I don't believe that that is an effective argument against the control tower. Secondarily, you know, you know, we'd have to figure out how to pay for it, but I do think it could be a benefit. The limiting factor on jet operations at that airport is the infrastructure, the runway lengths. And that is not going to change. Okay? I mean, I can just imagine if somebody came up here and said, hey, why don't we extend the runways in Lantana, how that would go over. So that's never going to happen. It doesn't matter if you have a control tower or not. The limiting factor is a physical limitation. There's just certain jets that can't safely operate on that length of runway. And that is what is going to limit the operation. Since the year and a half that we have not been, you know, enforcing the jet ban, you know, Aaron can tell you, you probably had less than 20 jet operations there in a year and a half. I don't see that dramatically changing, whether you have a tower or whether you have lifting of the jet ban. I just don't see the numbers being dramatically higher than that, you know? So that's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. All right, who's next?
I have three more cards. William Coakley, Drew Martin, and Aaron Klein.
Good afternoon, and thank you for holding this session. With your kind permission, I would like to distribute two things I sent you yesterday, but they're on paper, so it's easy for you to see the topic of what I'm talking about, which is, so do we have your permission for that?
Somebody from staff can take care of that, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. You'll see on the dark one, the subject. It's a little yellow dot. That's why I'm wearing a yellow shirt. Because that yellow dot says everything about the safety, aeronautical safety, flight operation safety at Lantana Airport. And this is the result of data taken directly from the aircraft. It's not third-party FAA data. It's not anybody else's data. Coming right out of the aircraft into my antenna and my research platform. I'm a commercial instrument multi-engine pilot. I got my ratings at Lantana Airport, and I'm intimately familiar with that airport because I flew for the former FBO or fixed-based operator there. I flew commercial flights, freight, and charters. And I can tell you what the data is saying. That right here at our Lantana Airport, there is a higher density of traffic operations than anywhere else for 30 miles. That includes the other two county airports, North County and Pahokee, and Palm Beach International. Guess what? At peak hours during the day, Mary told you what it's like sometimes, when there's four and five hours of uninterrupted aviation noise. That's what's going on right here. Because this is a density plot. And what it's telling you is that the operation counts here at the light bulb are higher than anywhere else for 30 miles. Now, the reason for that is, is because Lantana Airport's flight pattern is part of actually the Palm Beach International Terminal Control Area. Is that me that got right down there? Very sorry. But anyway, I am open to showing you what this data is saying because it's telling you something very important relative to what Vice Mayor brought up. And that is before proceeding with anything that would bring jet traffic in there, this needs to be done. And to my knowledge, the FAA has not done that, nor have they been able to present it to us or to you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coakley.
Have a great holiday.
Thank you for sharing your research with us.
Drew Martin, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club right now. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. But I do, I think there's a lot of real safety concerns about jet aircraft in this airport. And if you look at where the airport sits, you have I-95, you have Lantana Road, and you have Congress. You have all these busy roads. You have a lot of neighborhoods. And there have been crashes, plane crashes. People have been killed. Jets move much faster. There's, I can't believe that all this is being done with no control tower. And I think it's just a, it's an unfortunate thing that you lost in the courts because I do think there should be a ban on jets there. I don't think jets are really, it's not the proper airport for jet traffic. I don't know why they could have a ban for 50 years, and then all of a sudden they decide they can't have a ban. I'm very concerned about the safety and the pollution issues because, of course, with that much airplane traffic flying that close to houses, and you're getting a lot of pollution. You're getting a lot of noise. I absolutely think you need a control tower if you're going to continue. I don't know how. I mean, that would be like not having a traffic light or a stop sign next to a school. People are just, do whatever they feel like. They just, you know, I'm not a pilot, so I'll let the pilots address this. But it seems rather frightening that, what, no control tower, people are just doing whatever they feel like. They just take off, they land whenever they happen to get the wind to do it. You have neighborhoods, I mean, when I, I had, worked up in Louisville, Kentucky, they actually took out a lot of houses near an airport because it wasn't safe. It was a landing zone. So you have basically people landing and taking off over, right over the tops of houses, right there. So I think you need to get the congressional delegation involved, and if it's necessary. I mean, Florida has a lot of cloud with both parties. Get the Congress to pass a law. Make an exception if that's necessary. If not, absolutely. I don't see how you can have this airport operate without a control tower. It just makes no sense to me. And I just hate to see, you know, there's schools near there, there's a hospital, JFK was right near there. I mean, what, just imagine with jets which fly at a much faster rate, the kind of accident that is just waiting to happen. And I hope you will take some action to prevent that sort of a serious fatality with a plane crashing right into I-95. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Klein, are you still here?
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Klein, the general manager for Stellar Aviation, which manages the fixed-based operating operator at Lantana Airport. I've been with the company for 21 years. I managed Boca Raton Airport for 10 years under Stellar Aviation. I've seen the growth of Lantana Airport. I also know there is a standard Unicom frequency, which everyone uses, which is monitored by Palm Beach County Tower. So it's not as chaotic as you think. Everyone is talking. The jets do fit in just fine. They come in at a slower pace. They manage properly. They all land safely. They take off safely at the airport. There's never been an issue. The jets that have been coming in and out of Lantana Airport have been investigated by FAA from complaints from surrounding areas. They have all been cleared. When they come back to me and tell me that they did nothing wrong, they're within the weight and balance, the stopping distance, the type of aircraft that's allowed to operate at that type of runway was sufficient for runway use. So it's not like they're going out of their way to break a law. The pilots are very cautious. They're within their insurance requirements, too, to come in and out of Lantana Airport. They are doing just fine with the mix of aircraft that we have. The flight schools are aware that jets are operating out of there, so they have advised their staff, their pilots, their operators. We hold monthly meetings, which involve safety. We invite everybody to come to those meetings. We attend the AAAB meeting as well. We try to be as good as neighbors as we can. When there is a complaint, I am physically going to that pilot with the complaint, and I ask for that pilot to see what happened, why his aircraft wasn't taking off fast enough, why it wasn't high enough over people's houses. And we report back to the county of why it wasn't good enough. And we report back to the county of why it wasn't good enough. And we demand the answers from those pilots, from the student pilots. We educate our pilots. We educate the surrounding areas. We attend all the Part 150 survey meetings. I was there till 9:00 on the last 150 survey meeting. It started 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. to represent Lantana Airport, to show that the FBO, who is a business at the airport, is good neighbors and trying to be good neighbors with the county and everybody else around us. We're not trying to be a hero, but we want to let everybody know that we do care about everybody. We care about our business. We care about our surrounding communities. I've been in aviation a long time, and we're not going anywhere. The county, you know, supports us. We support the county, and we appreciate all of you and all your hard work and efforts to keep us safe and to keep us going for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
And I just have one more. It's a read into the record. It is from Art Vilwak. I want to thank Commissioner Kerner and the other commissioners for allowing the county to fight the FAA's decision to allow jets at the Lantana Airport. The City of Atlantis, Lake Osborne, and the other communities surrounding the airport appreciate it. And that's it for cards.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. All right, we're going to... I guess we'll bring this back to the board. I have... I just have a... And it's a follow-on question to Commissioner Kerner's question, which was, so if the board moves and moves forward with the correction action plan as we've been advised, we can still make that request, though, to the FAA that they implement or request a safety review and also the NEPA study as well. And you indicated, Ms. Beebe, that once we are in compliance, that would be something they're open to considering for us. And then my last question would be about the Part 150 study and getting that restarted, and how long would that take if board moves forward with the corrective action plan?
So, there are a number of questions in there. Submission of the corrective action plan can't be contingent on a safety study or NEPA or anything else. So, my recommendation would be that we submit the corrective action study as we proposed to you. And as part of that submission, we can also say that we, again, reiterate our request for a safety study. I am going to defer to Steve on the NEPA question. It's far more complicated than I can respond to from a legal perspective. And what was the last question?
150.
Oh, Part 150. We'd be happy to restart that as soon as possible. It's dependent on the FAA approving our forecast. I do believe as soon as we submit a corrective action plan that they will be happy to move that forward. We are on a time clock with that study because we have a grant, and it expires. I don't know that I have the specific date, but I...
I believe it's July of this year.
July of this year. So, we will move with all due haste to move forward with that study within our grant period.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Do you want to address the NEPA question, because I think it's worth hearing about?
I'm happy to. The environmental assessment under NEPA is a little bit more complicated, because in the traditional context, you know, there's a project, and in order for that project to move forward, you need some sort of FAA approval. And in order for the FAA to grant that approval, it needs to first comply with NEPA. The difficulty here is there is no federal action required for the county to rescind the jet restriction and restore its compliance with federal law. You don't need the FAA's permission to rescind the jet restriction. So, you can ask for environmental review under NEPA associated with the FAA's approval of the corrective action plan. But whether they agree to do that or not, the FAA's position is likely to be that you still need to move forward with submission of the corrective action plan and execution of the corrective action plan, because their approval is not a precondition to your action.
I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, sorry.
Fine. I was just going to ask, who is responsible, then, for conducting the study, and what does that look like cost-wise?
So, there's a few options. First, the FAA is by law the final arbiter with respect to safety issues, and they have a defined process for, you know, assessing safety and risk, you know, in operational environments. So, one alternative is to request that the FAA, under the auspices of FAA offices, conduct that study, which to date, they've been unwilling to do because of the litigation. There's also, you know, many consultants out there that, you know, could be retained to prepare that study and then present it to the FAA. The FAA, you know, is never going to accept the results of that study without their own analysis, but it can be helpful in trying to bring an issue to the FAA's attention. An environmental analysis is different. That is typically an obligation of the agency, but they will typically hire a consultant and ask the airport sponsor to pay for that consultant to conduct the environmental analysis, which the FAA would then adopt.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me initially say thank you to Vice Mayor Colback and City Manager Brian Morey. It's been a pleasure working with you, with your team, and with the community in Lake Osborne Estates through all this. You know, Vice Mayor and I actually flew to Atlanta to watch the oral argument, and so we could look the judges in the eye. It didn't help at all, because we lost 3 to 0, but I believe we've done everything we can. And that collaboration that you spoke about, Alan, will continue, of course, and your voices will be enhanced by your representatives here as well. So, having said that, also Stellar, you guys have been a great partner. I appreciate your communication, the way that you handle these situations, and I have only good things to say about your operations, and particularly your general manager over there. Finally, you know, it's hard to say that the mere introduction of jets is categorically unsafe. I think it presents some safety issues, particularly in this initial phase where there may be a bit more jet traffic. I think the risk factors are high, and that anything we can do to help manage that transition needs to happen. But I want to be on record that having jets in this... At this airport is problematic and present some real safety issues. And, you know, I hope and pray every day that they don't come to fruition, but it's going to be a challenge at that airport for a little bit, particularly if the jet operations increase. Now, we also need to recognize that jet operations have already started for a year, a year and a half already. And as far as I know, there haven't been any serious safety issues. There's an old saying, there's old pilots and there's bold pilots, but there's no old bold pilots. Safety is at the forefront of everything a pilot does, whether it's checklists or scanning the sky or maintenance of the aircraft. Everything is about safety, and by and large, it's a very professional group of aviators, whether it's professional or private pilots. And I know that will continue at the airport. Having said all that, I do want to make a motion to approve the corrective action plan as published. I'd also like to make, as part of that motion, that we request respectfully a safety and NEPA study, and that we continue forward with the Part 150 study as well. I think we'll have a better opportunity to see what can be done once we get this officially passed and the resolution passed. And I'd also like to encourage our... As part of our legislative strategy, that we engage our federal delegation. I'm not particularly certain on what the strategy should be. I'd like to see what develops, but I know this board will back us up on that if we want to engage our federal delegation. Finally, with regard to the tower, I don't think it's necessarily something that needs to be discussed at length today, but I would like Laura or whoever you think would be best to examine... I know at some airports, controlled airports, there's a satellite airfield, kind of like PBIA in Lantana, and they bring that satellite into that airspace, but they don't have a tower. And oftentimes, they'll work through the tower at the main airport. If we can examine that strategy, that would be helpful. Does that make sense?
Certainly something we can look into.
Okay. But I certainly am not in support of a tower, particularly at this early juncture, and I'm sure we'll discuss it later on. I also want to thank the board, prior boards, for your support. I know that I came to the board on many occasions asking for money from Laura's department and for litigation. And now I have Greg on the team, because he represents Atlantis now, right?
Yep.
And so, we'll continue the good fight, but we have to change our focus a little bit at this point. So, that's my motion.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I would just like to ask if you would mind amending the motion slightly to say, I don't mind the study, and I do agree, you know, we need to move forward with the corrective action, but just if the FAA decides not to pay for the study, I just don't want it to be our then taxpayer's burden.
Yeah, Commissioner, I have no problem with that perspective. I don't think I need to change the motion much at all. I think what would happen is they'll go investigate what type of request we can make. Maybe the FAA will respond and either say, you guys got to pay for it, or they pay for it, and then they'd bring it back to the board, and we'd make a decision whether to appropriate the funds or not. All right.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other lights on. I don't see any further need for discussion on this item. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. I want to thank the community for your input. It's very valuable. I want to thank staff. I want to thank our legal team for the fight that you put on for us. We knew going in it was a difficult fight, but you, I think, delivered our message to the courts and our concerns, and we will continue to voice those concerns as we move forward. So, thank you again.
Thank you all.
All right. So, we are now at Matters by the Public. It is now 2:00 p.m. We have three cards at this point, so if you wouldn't mind, we can plow through those. We still have a few more items on our agenda. It's after we get through those cards. If you all want to take a break for 30 minutes or something before we finish up, we'll discuss that then. Okay. So, let's move on to Matters by the Public.
We have three cards. Drew Martin, Linda Smith, and Gail Lad.
I tried to give you guys a break early.
Already scared away two commissioners. I didn't think I was that frightening. Actually, I want to speak a little bit on behalf of Commissioner Moreno in my concern about the temperature in here. And I added my extra sweater.
Go for a sweater.
You know, we had a discussion about the... You know, you said, you know, you're signing on to the Climate Pact and all that. Well, the biggest waste of energy in Florida is air conditioning.
Yes.
You know? And I'm one of the few people that doesn't like air conditioning, although I do use it from time to time. But, you know, I think it's ridiculous the temperature in here is so cold, and it's just a huge waste of energy. And I'm going to address the executive, Virginia Baker, for a second, because I know she's the real person in charge. So, could we just get facilities to find out, is there a way that this room could be comfortable? And I actually talked to Mayor Weiss about this. He said, well, I wear a suit, you know? Well, you know, he's comfortable, maybe. But the reality is that a lot of people are really not comfortable in this room. It's just way too cold. It's way too cold. And there was a woman who got up the other day, and she had to sit through that whole hearing, and I watched her remarks. I had to leave, so I watched them on TV. And she... Her teeth were... You know, I mean, you could literally have somebody die of, you know, exposure in here. And, you know, a lot of people do die in Florida from exposure to the cold, because people don't think, well, it's not that cold. But, I mean, this is just a huge waste of energy. You signed on to the Climate Compact. Is there some way the temperature in here could be compromised so it doesn't have to be so cold? And I suppose if there's a deputy administrator here who could just address that. And I did address this with the library, because I was going to the library. I was freezing cold all the time. So, I'm just saying, and for those of us who care about the taxpayer, by the way, guess who pays for the utility bill? The other thing I want to address real quickly is I was going to speak on your median program. You're going to have somebody look at the medians, and I would just like you to look into the possibility of maybe using a little more... Less machinery on the medians, making them a little more like butterfly garden-type approach, less fertilizer, and maybe you wouldn't have to spend so much, you know, mowing those medians. The other thing I really like to ask is when you have a landscaping crew and they see litter, do not blow the litter into the street. Actually, pick it up, and I think that should be part of your contracts. Anybody who's doing median work should be asked to pick up the litter when they see litter, not blow it... Get out a leaf blower and blow it into the street for somebody else to pick up. So, thank you for your patience, and I hope that Commissioner Moreno and I will someday be able to come here and be warmer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I am Gail Lad and from Jupiter, Florida, and I'm sorry I missed the meeting this morning, but I heard it went to a workshop, one of the things that I was talking... Going to be talking about. Anyway, what I'd like to talk about this afternoon is I would like all of you to have a firm support for the Stop the Burn out in the Glades and to go green and really encourage Florida sugar to look into the green harvesting. That is really important, especially for those who live there. Also, I wanted to... I found out about this movement of mothers...
This will be it.
...who are going to Washington to try to stop the assault weapons and to have the ban on assault weapons. And I know you, as citizens, can do your own thing, but it would be really great if the board could adopt a resolution, perhaps, that you are not... That you are in favor of an assault weapons ban. No citizen should have an assault weapon. This has nothing to do with taking guns away from people. It has to do with assault weapons of war. And I hope you, as private citizens, also would notify your Senator, Rick Scott, who's still not sure about it, and what his vote is going to be. It is in Congress right at this minute to be passed in the Senate. It has passed in the House of Representatives, and it's going to be passed, hopefully, in the Senate. We don't want to have a mass shooting here in West Palm Beach, and everyone who has had one has said, I didn't think it could happen there. So, let's pray for that. Thank you.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. If anyone wants to ask me about the VOT Cup Environmental Advisory Committee, feel free to ask me. I'm doing a quick follow-up on the last month's funding of the Bush Wildlife Capital Support Project. I understand you are anticipating a portion of the $4 million Cultural Council grant that may go partway towards something, but that grant's going to get divided up 1,000 different ways and will end up being just a drop in the bucket. There was a discussion about the Palm Beach County Commissioners writing a letter to FWC to request funding. I spoke to, I believe his name was Mr. Chase, Legal Affairs, and he was going to send me a copy of the letter so I could share it with the Sierra Club La Carche Group. I never received it. I don't know if the letter never got written, or if Mr. Chase is sending me a copy of that letter as I speak. December 10th is Andrew Red Harris Artificial Reef Day. The Andrew Red Harris Foundation, A-R-F-H-F, is dedicated to assuring long-term health and vibrancy for coastal waters of Palm Beach County. Let's help them by putting in place a countywide balloon release ban, not just on county parks. It's crazy that in the state of Florida, you are allowed to litter by releasing up to 10 balloons legally. Obviously, what goes up will come down. And then, if you wanted to, we could expand that to discussing a straw ban, a plastic straw ban. No one will go thirsty, trust me. West Palm Beach has been doing it for years. Then there's also the vending machines right outside these doors that are on Palm Beach County property. You can write into the RFP for the vendors to not use single-use plastic. Again, no one will go thirsty. All those sodas can be in aluminum cans. When I've spoken about this in the past, I heard that Palm Beach County is doing an excellent job of recycling. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not of that opinion. You can go down to the courtyard, right downstairs here, and try to look for a recycle bin. So, once you buy your bottle here and you take it outside to have your lunch, you have to walk your empty soda bottle or can back in through security. Really? Then there's this morning's Brookside. Sorry, I missed it as well. I know you all got my letter. I look forward to the workshop. Please make sure that Stephanie sends that to everybody on the agricultural reserve list. And I want to congratulate on the recent election on Polk County, Brevard County, Alachi County, I may mispronounce that, Indian River, and Nassau Counties for passing local referendum to fund protecting environmentally sensitive land with potential to attract matching state and federal funding. We seem to be very concerned about housing, which is important, but let's try to pass some referendums about environmentally sensitive land. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. We have two more cards. Jeanette, I apologize, I can't read your writing. Thank you. And John Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I've been here before. I'm here again regarding the traffic signal on South County, Lyons Road, and Escondido Way or Ara Drive. It has been a persistent problem. We have asked and had meetings on it with Commissioner Sacks. We've gone to FAU Engineering Department, but really to no avail. We haven't had a follow-up meeting with Maria Sacks and the residents of both our communities, Escondido Way and Timbers of Boca, and the situation is very hazardous. In fact, it's escalated. We've had an accident a month over the last 12 months. And according to your Uniform Code, your Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, there is under Section 4C, Warrant 7, Crash Experience. And the Crash Experience Signal Warrant conditions are intended for application where the severity and frequency of crashes are the principal reason to consider installing a traffic control signal. The need for a traffic signal shall be considered in that case, and it states, "Five or more reported crashes of type susceptible to correction by a traffic control signal have occurred within the last 12-month period." Well, I can definitely attest to that. We've had SUVs of a large variety wind up in people's yards. We've had them go against our bushes of our neighborhood, into the pool wall, not the pool, but the pool wall, and it presents an extremely hazardous condition. I've had several near misses where the accidents have happened right before I've left the community or coming in, particularly with my grandson in the back. I lost a son at this intersection five years ago. I don't intend to lose any other member of my family. This needs to be addressed, and I do not appreciate the lame excuses from the traffic department when I send this information about the accidents, and I'll give you a case in point. At one point, the SUV flew over the median, and it was, well, the tire blew, and then he lost control and went over the median, or he lost control and then he went over the median, the tire blew. It's academic. It is an S curve that is unsurmountable. People cannot negotiate that curve. And it's all of your all's problem on the commission, because it's the county commission, and people in your districts, as well as Maria Sacks' district, ride that very, very hazardous area. Something needs to be done. I don't like to be ghosted, which I feel like I am. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I pretty much echo everything that Jeanette said. I am a retired captain from Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. I live in Escondido. I bought in there in '89. '86, I got hired by the Fire Department, and I've been working in that district, in that area, since '86. And I can tell you, I can attest to you, the amount of crashes that I've worked in that intersection between our two communities is insurmountable. I actually directed the Trauma Hawk helicopter to land right in that intersection for an air medical transport to the trauma center. So, they are happening. It's not our figment of imagination. It's a dangerous intersection. The last time I was here, I kind of described to you that when we pull out from Escondido to go southbound, we pull out to that intersection, and it is tight. I mean, it's like a car-length tight. And you have to sit there with your neck bent and an exorcist kind of, you know, frame, and look for the southbound traffic that's coming around that turn, and they don't have much time. They don't have much time to realize that you're in that intersection, and they don't know what you're going to do. So, they freak out, and they may just pull a sharp right into the next lane, not knowing what's in that lane. So, these are how these accidents are happening. As Jeanette said, we've come to our county commissioner, I believe in the chain of command, and we went to our county commissioner. She's gone to staff. We've met with them both. And, you know, I've kind of been getting this impression that staff is the boss, and it shouldn't be that way. So, we're coming to you and asking you as a full commission, help the, our commissioner, help her. She needs help to get this done, something done. Whether it's a traffic light, whether it's one of those permanent radar signs that shows traffic how fast they're going. And one of the staff told me, well, that'll work for a little while, but then people will get used to that and will just ignore it. I don't think that's true, because even the people that live in that area, when they're coming around that tight turn, they don't know if there's a cop hidden in the intersection or one of our two entrances. There could be a cop waiting for them, and they don't know until they come right around that turn. So, I believe a radar sign, a permanent radar sign, just like the cities have, would be an answer. It's a 40 mile an hour speed limit, maybe drop it down to 30. There are things that can be done to help this problem out. So, please, all of you, help our commissioner get something done. Thank you.
Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
Thank you, and thank you, Jeanette, and thank you, John. And as you know, we've been meeting numerous times. I see Mr. Rick's here. I'm not going to put him on the spot, but, and I'm sorry about the loss of your son. We've been over this before. This is a dangerous, it was poorly engineered back with the FDOT, and it has never been completely corrected. It is tough on staff, because if we approve a traffic light, then there's our liability, because it is against the, it is against the rules of, that are followed by the FDOT. However, if we can do something to make, and we've been over this before, and maybe, you know, maybe we need to take it to the whole county, because it is a problem. And it is not a usual way to engineer that curve. It was, we brought it up before the FDOT Secretary. We didn't get any help from him. But maybe this is something we can work on as, Ms. Baker, maybe something we can work on as a full committee here to find a way to put some type of traffic device. Doesn't necessarily have to be a traffic light, but whatever is promoted and recommended by our engineers, we need to take a look at it. And I know we've been over this many, many meetings, and I've read a lot of stuff, but we're at an impasse right now. So, I'm going to ask you, Ms. Baker, should we review this in, with, Mr. Rick's has been very, always available to us, but can we review this with regard to the standards set by the FDOT for this particular roadway?
I've actually gone out on a field trip with Mr. Rick's on this particular site. We did reach out to Mr. O'Reilly, our regional director. We will reach out to him again. I thought we were coming up with some alternatives to a traffic signal, but I will follow up and we'll be reporting to you within the next week.
Thank you so much. This is your county commission working on behalf of the people here, because we're at an impasse, and the FDOT is not, they actually designed this curve. It is not well-engineered, as far as I can see, and I've been over it and over it. So, I appreciate that, Ms. Baker. Appreciate what you've done, Mr. Rick's. And God bless you both, John and Jeanette, for following through on this, for the safety, not only of your family, but the families that live there at Escondido, and for the drivers that go by there as well. So, we'll get, stay here for a bit. I think we're going to be taking a recess, hopefully. Our mayor will allow us, and we'll chat about this a little more. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized. Thank you, Mayor. Why can't a light be installed there?
Help legal. Actually, there are standards that must be met for traffic signals to be placed. And what we have found is that sometimes a traffic signal causes more accidents than not. And so, we follow the I T E standards. You guys, come on up. I'm remembering this by just being involved, but you're the experts on this. But there are standards that we must follow in order to put traffic signals in place. We have a number of communities that, hundreds of them, that ask for traffic signals to get in and out of their gate. We stay with the standards, because there are legal, I mean, there are legal reasons as to why and liability that we should not put signals where they are not warranted or specifically meeting the guidelines. But there are other things that I believe, and we've discussed, that we could potentially do in order to slow traffic. We could put in blinking signals to let people know to slow down, along with some other factors that we have discussed. So, I'm going to turn, I'm going to look at my traffic, I'm at my county engineer right now to follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Thank you, Commissioners. Just like Ms. Baker indicated, there are state standards that we use, federal standards. And so, like the lady indicated, that there was an accident per month. We'll take a look at that and see if it crosses that threshold, but we also constantly looking at the data to make sure that we're within compliance. But in terms of signage, we are looking at some things that we could do, and so that, you call that speech feedback sign is an option we would take a look at. The other thing is that median can be closed off if the community wants to do that, so no one's making a left turn in traffic. They would have to go out and then make a U-turn basically got a signalized intersection. That's one option if the community wants to do that, but they will have to indicate that they want to have that done. And so, short-term, we can do some feedback signs, but if the community wants to close off that median, we can do that at, be at the county's cause to do that, and that prevents someone from getting inside the median and making a left turn. So, there's other options that, outside of signal, that can be looked at.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
I don't want to interfere in Commissioner Sacks' district, but we're here to support you. We're here to support your constituents. So, if it's appropriate, I'd like to see specifically why a traffic light is not warranted or is not appropriate here.
We can definitely provide you that information. We've looked at it. We've got the analysis. We know what the criteria is, and we've gone through this with Commissioner Sacks, because if we are able to accommodate a community in putting that signal in, especially after deaths have occurred or even before, then we want to do so. But there are standards that we must follow.
And it's those standards that I'm interested in finding out what has not been met. We just, we were supposed to activate a light today on Lantana Road, right next to my community, Strawberry Lakes. And I saw, you know, every week crashes from people coming. I'm sure they don't meet the traffic warrants coming out of their neighborhood, but it was, it was just too much death and destruction that we finally got a light up there. And if that's the case here and it's appropriate, then I'm going to push this board to, you know, I don't want to step on Commissioner Sacks' toes, but I'll push it.
If it meets the warrants, there are a few exceptions, and especially the number of crashes within a period of time, then yes, those things are taken into consideration. But there are standards that we legally, and you understand that, we need to meet. And so, we are, we have looked at this particular issue. We will continue, as Mr. Rick stated, to monitor the issue. And when it reaches that threshold, as Strawberry Lakes, we will put that signal in place.
Commissioner Sacks?
Gosh, I appreciate everybody's help on this. I think this is an unusual area, because it was poorly engineered. Listen to me. It was poorly engineered when it was built. I have so many requests for traffic lights in my district. I don't want anyone to think that I'm favoring one group over another. There were days before when Commissioner Bert Aronson would use his slush funds and put lights all over the place. I sure wish I had some of those slush funds, because I'd love to put a number of lights. However, this particular area probably needs to have this looked at, and I appreciate the board's help, because we have been struggling over this for so long. So, one week, today, Ms. Baker, we will have a report ready. I'll work with Mr. Rick's. And either we'll have a picture of a beautiful light that has a big red light on it, or we'll have some other type of traffic control device that will slow that damn traffic down. Thank you so much for bringing it up. Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, and then we'll take a drive over there.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Just to piggyback and offer support with the information that we get next week, if we could have options that don't need to meet a threshold, if there's anything, even like a reduction in speed. I'm not sure what all of the regulations are, but whatever we could do without having to meet a threshold or something where we have to get state approval, DOT, and any of that, I would like to know if any of that is an option for next week.
We'll bring that information. And I probably spoke to soon, if you want additional information for next week. I do know we've had this, addressed this issue with Commissioner Sacks on this particular section. That's why I said next week, we could reaffirm and provide that report. If it's additional information, it may take us a little longer to next week with the additional information. But for this particular site, we have been working on that. Commissioner Sacks has had us in her office on numerous occasions on this particular site. But we'll try to get that other information as soon as possible, but to address this site, we'll make that haste.
Well, let me just add on to this and throw in Vespa'sian Court and Military. This is in District 2. We've had numerous accidents. And at that intersection, I know your traffic engineering department did a study for us last year on it, did the traffic counts. We fell just below the threshold. And of course, we had another serious accident a few weeks ago at that intersection. So, you know, it's, I mean, obviously, clearly, people need to be more cognizant when they drive. They need to drive defensively, but on the other hand, if there are things that we can do to help make it safer. I think that's, you know, whether it's the speed warning signs or, you know, I know we've gotten additional traffic enforcement, but that only works for a short period of time, and people go back to their old ways and driving unsafely. All right. Okay, so we have no more cards. We are done with public matters by the public. We are now at 2:30. I will ask the board what your pleasure is. We still have a few more items left to go. We have one that wants to break. The rest are saying plow through. Up to you guys.
And then come back and, I mean, how much?
What do we got? We have an engineering item. We have OCR. And then we have our, oh, our six strategic priorities, so we have three items. In addition to our own stuff, our board appointments and comments and all that other, so you guys?
I would suggest breaking for, you know, 15, 20 minutes. We could get something to eat and then come back. Or we could order a pizza for everybody. I mean...
Okay. All right. 20 minutes. Is 20 minutes enough time for everybody? Okay, so we're recessed. It's now 2:30. We'll recess till 2:50. Thank you, and see you shortly.